four point two six one is a three percent increase. Just for some reference, the real property amended budget for F Y nineteen is eleven million, six hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars, and to date we ' ve collected eleven million, four eight four four thirty five. So here are our revenue projections compared to the amended budget for nineteen. Please keep in mind that the amended budget for F Y two thousand nineteen anticipates amendments that we bring forth before you in September. We will go into further detail later, so I ' m going to go past this for this time. I would like to take a moment to explain some of the opportunities for savings for some of our taxpayers. Um, the city does trickle down the basic homestead exemption that you apply for at Fulton County. That is fifteen thousand dollars off of your assessed value here for the city of Milton. We also have the CPI floating exemption, which I ' ll go into explaining in the next slide. Um, seniors also can apply right here at the city for additional exemptions. H C C five receive an additional fifteen thousand dollars. If you ' re sixty five and meet the current income qualification, it ' s twenty five thousand. And if you ' re seventy and meet the income qualification, it ' s a full value exemption. You don ' t pay any city taxes. The same thing for any um one disabled and currently meeting that income qualification pay no city taxes. Here ' s a little bit of information about that floating exemption, the CPI exemption that ' ll be first applied in this year ' s taxes. It applies to your primary residence and the five contiguous acres of land around your property. You take your base year, and the base year is calculated by the lower appraised values of sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen. Each property will depend upon what they had values in those years of which year it applies. And for two thousand nineteen, you take that base year and multiply it by one point zero four two three. That is the multiplier that represents the inflation rate data for December fifteenth through seventeenth. In subsequent years, that will raise to the lesser of three percent or the current CPI index. Once you have that, you ' ll get your adjusted base year value by multiplying your base year by that value and then reducing it for any, I ' m sorry, for the floating exemption taken from your assessed value. So here you can see a house in two thousand seventeen that had a three hundred and forty thousand dollar value, and they multiply that by the one point zero four two to give them their adjusted base year value. Then you take that number and do that by your forty percent to give you your assessed value that you ' ll be taxed on. So that assessed value will be what you multiply the millage rate by. So then you take the two thousand nineteen appraised value, which is your fair market value. You take forty percent of that, and then the difference between those two values is your floating CPI home set exemption. So that goes added to your other exemptions to reduce your taxable value in two thousand nineteen. Lastly, we also have the conservation use value assessment, your C U V A. Um, this is for properties that are deemed for more agricultural or rural usage. There no minimum amount of acres required, but there is a maximum of two thousand acres and you must keep your land in that status for ten years. And that does reduce the value of your property that you pay your taxes on. Here you have before you calculating your tax bill. So the average home value, fair market value in Milton, is four hundred thousand dollars. And this example here shows that four hundred thousand dollar home with a basic home set exemption of fifteen thousand dollars and what they would pay with no other exemptions being considered under the three different millage rates. So under a four point seven three one millage rate, they would pay six hundred and eighty six dollars. Under a four point three nine millage rate, they ' d pay six hundred and thirty six dollars and fifty five cents, and under a four point two six one millage rate, they would pay six hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty five cents. So the difference here between the four point seven three one and the four point three nine zero is just under fifty dollars. This slide went to show that how the CPI exemption is going to affect some of these values. You can see where a home of four hundred thousand dollars has a larger CPI exemption than a home of two million dollars may have a greater savings due to that CPI exemption in this tax year. So that just gives you some examples of the different bills you ' d pay with the CPI exemption. Here before you, you have a breakout according to F Y nineteen ' s amended budget of what you would be paying annually, monthly, and daily for each of these different categories of city, um, what the city brings to you. So for public safety, you ' d pay seventy five cents a day for those public safety attributes, parks and rec, about fourteen cents a day. So in total, at the four point seven three one you ' d pay a dollar eighty eight a day for your services from the city, including the capital P E G O program, fifty seven dollars and seventeen cents a month, or that six eighty six year that we just saw calculated on the last slide. Here is that same breakdown across all three different millage rates, so you can see that. So next we ' ll go into talking about the rationale for a four point three nine or keeping the millage rate where it is. Keeping the millage rate at four point three nine will allow the city to continue um the basic maintenance and operating services. No, there ' ll be no service level decreases, minimum maintenance as opposed to maybe some more proactive or increased service level improvements that we will talk about later this evening. Um, a variable millage rate approach also could reduce the city ' s P E G O strategy and turn more into a bonding approach. You could choose to bond for items as opposed to putting away towards a P E G O program. Um, the rationale for returning to the capped millage rate, the city would have the ability to continue funding its current capital improvement plan as it has been laid out. Um, there ' ll be a timeline to implement and complete master plans that have just come online and some that are still to be approved by council. Um, some of the challenges of our capped millage rate and keep and reducing it beyond it are that we have a limited commercial tax base. Um, many cities have a forty to sixty percent um commercial tax base. We have about a thirteen to fifteen percent in any given year at this time. Um, assessed property values have not kept up with the market since two thousand eight, and then when they started to give up with the market, we now have the floating exemption in place that will cap them at those sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen values. So that will keep us with a lower tax digest than we would have seen if they kept with market. Also, we have a community vision to retain our rural character. So there is really not at this time an anticipation to seriously increase that tax base for the commercial property. Also, we have our results of deferred long or short term capital maintenance can often lead to more costly capital replacements and um we are looking to try to forego those types of things by keeping our routine maintenance in place. We don ' t have to do more expensive things like full depth reclamation and other projects that would cost more in the long run. So next we have our current operations versus our new initiatives. So the city ' s first priority is always to maintain existing operations and services for the residents. And then once corresponding funds are allocated, we can look at new initiatives and increase levels of service. And below is an example of that to try to explain what we ' re saying when we say that. Current operations would be something like repaving a road as scheduled as we ' ve had scheduled for the last few years. An enhanced level of service may say, let ' s repave additional roads that need retention at this time or do them ahead of schedule or maybe go ahead and do a full depth reclamation as opposed to just patching or repaving as was scheduled. Lastly, a new initiative could be something like, let ' s construct an entirely new road to ease some congestion kind of like we did here at Heritage Walk. So next we have our service levels. These are some opportunities to increase our service levels based on some citizen feedback we ' ve received over the years. Staff gets calls, things like that, and we try to put into the budget um funding to be able to address those kinds of requests. We ' ve talked about having adequate maintenance of newly acquired green space properties. So we have at these properties infrastructure maintenance, hazard mitigation, trail maintenance, mowing and landscaping, and later tonight you ' ll see what that ' s going to cause the city in year one. Um, we have the request to have some improved debris management, curb and gutter as well as right of way, keeping them cleaner and more visually appealing. More manicured landscaping in certain public areas as opposed to letting things grow tall and a little more wild. Um, enhanced public safety technology to aid in solving cases, crime reduction, and search and rescue capabilities. And then lastly, the timely implementation of our city plans. We have received plans for Providence Park, for the Milton Country Club, Parks and Rec Ten Year Master Plan. They ' re working on another uh full city trail plan. So those will go into that larger C I P discussion. Continuing that, we ' ll talk about right of way mowing frequency, capital contributions currently that we have that go towards the schools so the city has an I G A, and Milton provides capital improvements in kind for ability to use the fields. That is a cost to the city to consider. Um, we have our paving schedule and our ability to repave additional roads. And then lastly, efforts to attract and retain a highly talented workforce. This doesn ' t only mean increasing wages and benefits, but also just being able to keep retention. So in some of our smaller departments of one or two people. If you lose them, the impact and the slow the slowdown for turnover can be a great deal of trouble. That is the military presentation.
Do you have any questions for Bernardette? Bernard, the uh homestead exemption and the examples they have, is does everybody get that or what percentage of the people in Milton actually get the homestead exemption of fifteen thousand dollars?
So out of our almost fourteen thousand parcels, about seven thousand eight hundred appears typically come in with a home set exemption on them. That ' s your basic home set exemption, which then you are typically eligible for that and then adds on the other ones. So that ' s roughly fifty percent.
Okay, so. Okay, that ' s what I was wondering. Thanks. Okay. Any other questions? Um, do we have a public comment on this item?
We do have one public comment from Judy Burns.
Hi, Judy Birds, one one six five Bream Drive, of course, in Milton, Georgia. At the second miller trade meeting, I would have been all three now, I brought up the green space bond fund. Um, subsequent to that meeting, I did some additional research on the green space ballot language, as well as the ordinance that was passed detailing that ballot. In my research, what I found was that the use of this bound bond could be also for park improvements. It was clearly articulated, and it is what I voted for. I emailed several members of council regarding this over the past two weeks. I would like to have your consideration and recommend to council that these funds, not all of them, but a small portion of them, be considered for park improvements rather than solely for land purchase as provided for in the ordinance and in the ballot provision, which I voted for. This should allow a mileage of less than the maximum allowed and still address much needed road repairs in my area. Thank you.
Thank you. That ' s all our public comment, correct? Any other questions at this point? If not, Joe. We are. We are. No, you have more time. Okay. At this point, I would ask that we recess this special call meeting and we ' ll move into our work session and then we ' ll uh we ' ll come back into this meeting afterwards. Do I have a motion to recess this special call meeting? So moved to the side. Okay. I have a motion to for recess from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Unanimous.
All right, that ' s uh, you got both. Okay, so that ' s unanimous. Okay, we ' ll uh work it and move into our work session. Uh welcome to our August twelfth, two thousand nineteen regularly scheduled work session. Tonight we have three items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city clerk before the agenda item has been read. If you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have the authority of said organization. Please remember this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address. For the record, public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public comments will be accepted. So Stacy, if you will, please sound the first agenda item.
First item is presentation regarding national citizen survey, Ms. Shannon Ferguson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There we go. So as you most of you know, we have a a citizen survey that is conducted every two years um by the National Research Center. It is conducted in partnership with I C M A, the International City County Managers Association. We thought what a wonderful time to sort of share the results, very high level details of those survey findings, um to night, um in conjunction with obviously the millage rate discussion and uh our ongoing budget discussions or upcoming budget discussions. Just to give you a brief high level um synopsis of the survey, as I said, it ' s done every two years. The last survey that was conducted was in two thousand sixteen. It was deferred in two thousand eighteen when we were adjusting for collection of property tax revenues. So that was deferred to this year in two thousand and nineteen. The research does produce a number of documents which we will be posting um on the website. So it has a dashboard, a summary analysis, and all of those will be made available to citizens on the website. And of course, what it does is it assesses built in and serves as a Milton ' s performance against national benchmarks with other cities across the country. So in terms of high level details, um less than twenty questions um are included, um which include some custom questions, which I will go over at a very high level detail, and some additional demographic questions that go along with all of the surveys. We mailed survey cards the first week of March, um directing statistically valid survey sample to a URL to complete the survey. Um, we then came behind that after a period of time, about a month, added the survey to the website. We also distribute it via the city email, through constant contact to all of our databases. We also boosted a post on Facebook to encourage citizens to complete the survey, driving them again to that online survey tool. The representative sample totaled seven hundred and twenty two residents with a four percent margin of error. Um, we captured residents of Kenyans within the three pillars as defined by N C R, um which are one, community characteristics, two, governance, and three, participation. Those three pillars are then sort of drilled down into the eight central focuses. As you can see listed, we have safety, mobility, natural environment, the built environment, economy, recreation and wellness, education and enrichment, and then community engagement. Um, the top three um central focuses identified through the survey results from our citizens are highlighted in yellow. And I am pleased to report out of all of those eight central focuses, none of those Milton scored lower than its national benchmark, which is a positive survey result. High level details, um either we either scored higher or similar than the national averages when it came to overall livability. With the exception specific to mobility, those comments, and I will be sharing the reports with you, um those specifically are related to public transportation and things of that nature. Um, governance category boasted four categories higher than the national average, which we are proud to report, general governance, safety, the economy, and community engagement. Uh, and almost all residents rated the quality of life in Milton as excellent or good. Um, this uh number aligns with what we saw in two thousand sixteen, uh survey findings. So you would indicate that that ' s a sustained performance. Some of the more significant findings that were extracted, um residents were more likely to give overall positive um ratings of the overall direction of the city, the job we do, welcoming citizen involvement and engagement, and our overall service quality. Um, overall, our image and appearance as a place to raise children beat national benchmarks. Four in ten residents um or less positively rated paths and walking trails, ease of walking, travel by bicycle, public transportation, which obviously aligns with some of that mobility um analysis that I mentioned earlier. Um, they were, like I mentioned, less likely to use alternative modes of transportation instead of driving. Um, overall, the competence in city government as far as being honest and treating residents fairly, um were all higher than the national average, and seventy seven percent of the residents responded that the sense of community was either excellent or good, again beating the national benchmark. Some of the significant findings, um, in terms survey over survey year improvements year to year, uh the rating for a downtown vibrant downtown commercial area actually increased between the two thousand sixteen and two thousand nineteen reporting period. Um, government acting in the best interests of Milton, um and the customer service that ' s provided by city employees actually increased since that last survey analysis. Um, and economic development saw a survey over survey improvement. And again, those details are in survey and I ' ll be posting those. In terms of sustained performance year over year between the surveys, um governance in terms of sustained performance and sewer services and storm drainage was consistent, um land use planning and zoning was consistent, and of course the value of services for taxes paid was sustained. Two areas of notable decline, uh which were not significant, um the only two, one being service in terms of street lighting., Um, sometimes that can also be how the questions are posed and how citizens um understand the city ' s role in actually managing um street lights. Um, and then also there were some notable differences in terms of affordable housing between the survey periods between two thousand sixteen and two thousand nineteen. Um, a few of the special topics questions, just want to briefly go through those because they served a distinct purpose, um from a city SASS perspective. So one of those questions was overall, how would you rate Milton in facilitating citizen involvement and public comments during council meetings. And the rationale here was obviously considering, you know, any community feedback that we received throughout the year. We sought to examine that more closely to obtain a statistically valid survey sample about how citizens were actually gauging how we sought to engage them in the public comment process, offering feedback to council. Um, and of the respondents, half answered they they didn ' t know, which is typical citizens. Not all citizens are actively engaged with their government. Um, but seventy four percent that those that did respond rated Milton excellent or good in terms of offering public comment um periods and efforts. The second question was, um, if at all to rate, um, what was their decision in choosing Milton, uh, their decision to choose Milton to call home. Obviously, this helps us matter determine what matters most, uh, in the decision making process for individuals who choose Milton, um, and most obviously cited, uh, low crime rate, crime rate, good schools, access to the places that they typically go, um our rural character, um and the people all scored sixty percent or greater as the key observations in that question in those categories. Um, the third question that we looked at is in terms about how citizens are actually obtaining information from the city. Um, and this was specifically by communications to determine where are residents getting their information from. Um, one interesting observation is that by and large Twitter on a statistically valid sample for Milton even with our um highly educated, technologically savvy citizen rate, Twitter did not rank um high. So of the channels listed, um never none of them um were ranked as the go to source, which is very common in a sort of a digitally segmented world. You know, old school, we would issue a press release and radio or TV would pick it up, the newspaper. Now, obviously with the presence of world wide web, so social media your audience is sort of segmented. So the fact that we don ' t have a go to is not surprising um to to me. Um, the fourth question, um, was specific to drafting the city ' s five year strategic plan, um, and to try to determine what were the top three items that the city should focus on. Um, and we wanted to maximize the opportunity to take advantage of that statistically valid survey sample. Um, these were open ended questions and responses. Um, of the four hundred and eighty nine, uh, of the seven hundred and twenty two respondents, four hundred and eighty nine answered the question. I want to give you just a snapshot of those high level responses categorically as categorized by N C R. About half the responses noted that growth over development or maintaining our rural character and open space was important. Four in ten commented about traffic or road congestion. A fourth of the respondents commented specifically on parks and recreation. And two in ten noted obviously of public safety, um which aligns with what we saw in those eight categories. Um, and the bottom three were alternative transportation, community engagement and events, and zoning and code enforcement. So those you would surmise are the less likely categories for them to want us to focus on. So the conclusions, not per me, but per the National Research Center, is that our residents are prioritizing their safety. That is capitalized because that is one of the key categories, um and that they feel safe in their community. Um, residents value the natural environment and our rural character. Um, they are pleased with our economy and the growth locally that they see. Um, and that there are some challenges related to mobility, but obviously those challenges align with our demographic in general. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have specific questions on the survey though, I will take them and note them and get back to you.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah.
Shannon, when when is the survey going to be available for everybody to see and all
It will be posted in the morning, but wanted to take the opportunity to answer any questions tonight, um, and then post those. And so it will go out in the upcoming newsletter. So it this time strategically for that.
Thank you. Joe.
So, do you have any data from this survey? Can we get all the results?
We do. We do. And all of all of that will be shared and posted.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Shannon.
You ' re welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Stacy, if you ' ll please read the next item.
Next item is discussion of the fiscal year twenty twenty budget.
And do we have any public comment on any of these items? Okay.
Yes, I will. Mr. Steve Krkoff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am going to uh shift the presentation over to Bernadette, and from there, we ' ll be moving around, presenting uh between myself, Bernadette, and the various department heads.
Okay. Good evening again. Tonight we will be going over the proposed F Y twenty budget. The official budget book will be ready for the first presentation in public hearing on September ninth. We will begin this evening by discussing current revenue projections and any major variances seen between F Y nineteen ' s amended budget and F Y twenty ' s proposed budget. Please keep in mind again, the F Y nineteen amended budget has figures that are going to come before you in the amendment in September. After this evening, my colleagues will come up and discuss each of their new initiatives for maintenance and operating as well as capital, and then we ' ll go into the continuing capital improvement plan. This budget has been prepared due realizing a four point seven three one millage rate. So looking at the trends over the past five years, we have recognized a slight decline. I want to go over some of the highlight, the major changes that we ' re seeing in revenues, not every single line, but these are the line item categories that we have in more detail than we ' ve seen in the millage rate presentation. So as we ' ve looked at the last trends over the last five years, we ' ve recognized a slight decline in natural gas related franchise fees, and you will see a five percent reduction in anticipation of this, recognizing that trend. We have conservatively estimated loss revenue increases at fifty thousand dollars as there ' s been a long period of expansion in the market that may not continue through the entirety of F Y twenty. You ' ll notice that insurance premiums have been on the rise, and looking at the past few years, we ' ve seen an average growth of around seven to eight percent. So we ' re keeping that trend going. Land disturbance permits have varied from a low fourteen thousand to a high of about two hundred and sixty four thousand over the last eight years, and we felt that that fifty thousand dollar figure was a good figure to expect for F Y twenty. The city has current no expectation of receiving operating grants in F Y twenty, so you will see a decrease there. Um, some of the grants we ' ve received in the past have been FEMA, bulletproof vests, programs, things like that. Charges for services are remaining fairly consistent, and so we ' re seeing just a slight increase of nine thousand dollars there from F Y nineteen to F Y twenty. The variance you ' re seeing in investment income is being driven by the startup of many capital projects. Um, so we have less idle funds able to be invested is not showing that we ' d have a loss on our investments. So you ' re seeing a slight decline there for F Y twenty. Um, and as you can also see, the city never anticipates receiving a donation or insurance payouts for damaged property. So those lines have been set to zero dollars for F Y twenty. You are going to see a request here in the rents and royalties category for eighty thousand twenty six dollars. This is in anticipation for sell tower lease fees in F Y twenty. In the F Y nineteen amendment, staff will be making requests that council take the funds from sell tower lease revenues, receive over the years from land conservation, where they are committed, and uncommit them and allow them to be moved towards improving and maintaining the properties that have been procured through the green space bond funds. Also in F Y nineteen, the city sold fire apparatus and some of the golf course maintenance equipment that we received in the procurement of the property on Dinsmore Road, which caused higher than typical revenue collections in the proceeds of sales of assets, and you ' ll see that that decrease also from F Y twenty. Lastly, you ' ll see eighty three thousand and ninety three dollars in the transfers in from the capital projects fund. These revenues include nine thousand seven hundred dollars from the parcel alignment project account to cover costs associated with year one of the maintenance agreement for that data, eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety three dollars from the completion of the birdhouse renovations to go towards repainting and landscaping the property, and fifty five thousand to move restriping of existing roads from capital back to maintenance and operating, and the balance of that project account will go towards pavement management. You ' ll see that later when we go over the capital improvement plan. So now I ' d like to take an opportunity to let each of my colleagues come up and discuss their initiatives. We ' ll start with Sarah Ladarc from Economic Development.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the Economic Development Department is requesting twenty five thousand dollars to rewrite um chapter four, which is our alcohol ordinance. Over the past several years, we have made changes reactively as opportunities have arisen. Uh, we would like to bring in an alcohol ordinance professional to rewrite the ordinance with city council, staff, and leasing and developers um looking at Milton. The purpose is to create a proactive ordinance that clearly defines what we want and attracts unique businesses to Milton. Any questions?
Yeah, I ' m gonna with each department. Is there any questions on this or comments? No.
Yes, sir.
Um, we ' ve never spent twenty five grand on an alcohol ordinance before. Is that so? Is that um how often do cities or municipalities do that? Do we are we just trying to be better than Alpharetta or Roswell or what ' s the story on that?
No, okay, so especially in the crab apple area, we have developers coming and we have, you know, everything is coming in and they ' re coming to us with No, okay. So especially in the crab apple area, we have developers coming and we have, you know, everything is coming in and they ' re coming to us with really cool ideas and we don ' t allow them. We don ' t allow craft beer and wine markets. We don ' t allow food halls. Um, just across the board, a lot of things we just don ' t allow. So we want to be able to look at this, come to council with a list of ideas and have council say, okay, we do want this ordinance, we don ' t want that. We want to be able to have this in this development. Um, cause right now over the past several years we ' ve been piecemealing it when somebody comes with a cool idea. We ' re like, okay, well, sure, we can add this, you know, license in. Um, but it ' s not cohesive. It doesn ' t clearly state that when a developer or a leasing person is trying to attract somebody, it doesn ' t. You have to come to us every time and say, well, this is what we ' d like to do. Can we? And we go, all right, well, we have to go through this four month process to change it. We ' d like to proactively tell establishments what they can do here in Milton and be attractive and the twenty five thousand is what that costs.
We just get a finished ordinance and here you go? Or do they give us an economic ramifications of the decision that we ' re going to do based on how many businesses we should get, how many new alcohol establishments we should get, the possible issues we might have with police and fire? I don ' t know. What do we get with that?
Right. Okay, so it would be a in, you know, the thought process that we ' ve gone through, it would be a multi- stage thing. We would bring in brainstorming with finance department, economic development, community development on issues we ' re having now, things we ' ve been hearing about the past several years that we are having problems with or have wanted to do but it hasn ' t quite fit in anywhere yet, and then bring in those leasing agents, those developers who are actually talking to the companies who have these ideas and the funding to be able to bring in these cool ideas and ask them how have these worked other places, the best practices of people across the area, um, and be able to bring that to us and put it together in a cohesive way to present to council. So it would be multi- getting input from residents. What do they want to see here? Do they want to see a food hall? Maybe they don ' t. But getting that input from people in Milton on what they do and do not want, bringing it all to council, you guys, our council has the the final word on that, and then working with that um ordinance professional to write it in such a way that we ' re protected. Um, we feel like we do a pretty good job of writing in those little caveats to keep the city protected and then just putting it out there and seeing what can come. And yeah, they I don ' t know that they can guarantee that we would get cool people and cool projects to come here, but it would encourage it.
Let ' s return on investment. That ' s all I ' m asking. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would yeah, I would ask too is, I ' m assuming it ' d be safe to say since this is in our commercial areas and our city center and whatnot, if we ' re on the cutting edge and we attract the latest and greatest, um, the payback could be ten fold.
Absolutely.
Just with revenues and whatnot from the commercial entities. Okay. Anybody else? Um, and again, Carol and Laura on the phone, feel free to jump in if you have any questions as we move forward.
Yeah, I just, this is Laura. And so my question, I mean, it ' s a it ' s a great thing to better understand and I support, you know, with our limited commercial areas, doing all that we can to maximize what we do have. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can we switch? You need to switch. I can ' t read that. So the uh my apologies, this is what happens. Um, thank you. So the so these are the uh these are the the city manager driven maintenance operating initiatives. The first one is a consultant for our our new strategic plan. Um, we ' re ending our strategic plan period where we ' ll be entering into a new one. We ' ll be we should start that process in twenty twenty. Um, what I ' m looking to to do with this is have a larger community involvement component to this, um, so that council when determining what are our vision and goals will be, you ' ll have the data to work from, not only from the the recent NCR report that that Shannon talked about, but also um more specific questions and more specific goal oriented direction from a from a consultant.
Any questions on that?
This the second one I have is for a comprehensive internship program. We have been using interns here for for many years. Um, this year especially, we had we had significant success and it was driven by two interns. Um, the uh interns have historically, even in my my old world were are difficult to manage if you don ' t have a structured process and program in place. And uh one of her interns this year, her job was to create this internship program that makes sure that there are win- win uh win- win situations put in place so that the student, and these will be mostly undergrad students, um, come in and uh they have a program that 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 better uh augments their their educational process, but at the same time provides uh the city with with real tangible value. And we got we saw that this year, especially in the program that she created and um and over in parks and rec. So uh that ' s something we want to see uh move on. We ' re looking for for two part time positions over over a ten week period over the summer. They each get paid fifteen dollars an hour, which is generally what we see in the internship world. Um, and the bottom line on that, can you scroll down, is eleven three seven six.
Okay. Is it, and obviously again, it ' s safe to say that that ' s a a value for our actual citizens that are interns, as well as the city gains value uh out of that too.
There ' s a few things I, yes, to your question, there ' s a few things we ' re looking to gain out of that. Not only the the experience and the work here at the city level, um, but we ' re also hoping to create a pipeline of city Milton residents into into the city Milton government, um, whether it be at the staff level or future electeds and things along those lines. And I get to say from what I ' ve seen, there ' s a if if they do come back to the city of Milton, we ' re going to be in good shape.
Good.
Uh, the final one I have in here is a departmental assessment. Uh, in some of our organizations like police and fire and and uh finance, you have uh you have best practices, established best practices from which to work by. In in police, we have CLIA. Uh, finance, we we have GFOA and and our auditors. Um, another organization, fire, I apologize chief, I know it starts with an N and ends with an A. Thank you. NFPA. Um, we lack it in in other areas in the city. And and what I ' m looking for is the ability to make sure that we are employing best practices in our in our various departments. Um, this is something I would I would look to do over a several year period. Um, twenty five thousand is generally what I ' m expecting to to for it to cost for one larger department or maybe two smaller departments. Um, I want to continue this in the process. In the areas where you just don ' t have those those accrediting accrediting agencies or organizations that make sure you have the best practices and policies in place in your various departments.
Okay. Do any questions so far on city managers? Carol and Laura, are you good?
I ' m good. Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
And that ' s my final one. Correct?
Next we have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is David Richards. I am the lead systems engineer here at the City of Milton. Um, Prioritization. Modernization. G I S it looks like. Huh? Yes. Okay. So for uh G I S, we have an M and O initiative uh for G I S. Um, that initiative includes software and licenses uh for the um, it ' s in relation to the capital request. The capital request um is for hardware. Uh, the benefits uh are additional additional capabilities. This includes simple simplified user interface and ease of access to information. It also allows reduced training requirements and eliminate power users to access information. So that in turn saves personal personnel hours, uh which reduces cost.
So the bottom line on the operating side would be twenty three thousand four hundred and thirty two dollars. And then there ' s a corresponding um capital initiative for the hardware and servers of forty seven four thirty two. Then public safety complex.
Thank you. Oh, there ' s visual aids too.
So just just to add on to that, if I could, David, do you mind if I I jump in?
Sure, of course.
Um, you did an excellent job. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Um, what what this does for for those people that are not um traditional G I S users, um, and this is not just on the staff side, it ' s on the it ' s on the citizen side, uh, it it creates more of a uh, it it more of a web type interface, something that uh is more intuitive to the to the casual user. Um, so you were able to get your questions answered, practice help help, access our data sets to be able to to do your own analyses, things like that. Um, from an internal standpoint, it ' s going to allow us to be able to have one stop shopping for information, especially especially at police and fire where you ' re now going to have integrated information uh based on addresses and things along those lines.
Okay. Joe, question.
So so this is a replacement for non demand and it ' s decided on top of next to nearby.
It works with. Now I ' m going to have to ask you to, how does it inter, I know it is Milton on demand, but how does it how does it work with it?
I would say that it is an enhancement to what we have currently. Uh, it ' s leveraging additional capabilities um that are available to us um as we move forward with our G I S program.
So these are things we ' re subscribing to so that it ' s added to what we have or is something we have to just all of the host and we manage?
I can help you with that. Yes. Um, both. Currently, we have uh we have a host of of applications that we will be able to leverage now as a result of uh as a result of these additions through our G I S. Um, and a lot of these data sets are not available unless you ' re a power user and you have specific access. So I can ' t get it, but someone else maybe in in public works can. And from the from the citizen standpoint, they can ' t. Um, so we want to try to make sure we make all of that information as available as possible to the casual user.
Okay. Mayor?
So G G I S does obviously the satellite images, it ' s got the land maps and all that stuff too, right? And so how how quickly is it updated when changes happen to plaits and things like that? I was just I just don ' t know. I ' m curious.
So it depends also. Um, we ' re looking, I ' m I ' m working towards real time updating, not only in uh in things like permits and uh even applications, but also I ' m looking for uh crime information to be up up because right now we use a third party. I know that we can leverage our our current G I S to be able to use that as well. So I would like, I ' m looking for real time reporting within an interface with R R M S. Right now, most of our permits get entered uh once a day. Uh, what I ' m looking for hopefully is once we get our our electronic plan review, which we ' re working on contemporaneously, is to have that data be able to upload and interface with with our G I S. So you, if you ' re driving down the road and you see trees coming down, well, let me click on uh on on my G I whatever Milton app that will look like it, that I ' ll probably still be the mod, um, you ' ll be able to click on a little icon on the address and actually see the LDP. Um, that ' s what we ' re looking for in the not so distant future. We have twenty twenty as the completion date. I ' m hoping by the end of twenty twenty, you ' re going to have that ability.
But hopefully not clicking on your phone while you ' re driving.
As you pulled over, yes.
That you pull up. Right. Okay. Anybody else? Laura, um Carol, one thousand one, one thousand two.
Nope. Good. Well, we we ' ve had the benefit of the uh other meeting, so I ' m good. Thank you.
Okay. And I ' ll just make that comment too per Carol ' s to the citizens and those watching that uh um all council has had access to staff and the budget and and meetings and whatnot to go over these things. Okay.
Okay. Um, the next thing that I would like to discuss uh is the public safety complex systems and network infrastructure. Uh, as you know, this is a brand new building, uh, and this building will require a similar investment uh to the investment we made here uh with our uh network switches, servers, everything that enables us to uh be all that we can be uh in serving the citizens of Milton, um, you know, be it uh with computers, mobile devices, things of that nature. So the estimated project cost is one hundred and sixty two thousand. What this will do is it will increase the reliability and capability for business continuity and disaster recovery efforts. Um, and it will also provide necessary core infrastructure, uh, and information services to to the staff and citizens.
Any questions on that?
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, thanks.
What?
Oh, that ' s it. Oh, okay. No questions. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
HR.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, there are two M and O initiatives for human resources, including this year ' s budget request. The first is fifteen hundred dollars for a personnel policy rewrite. We ' re already pretty much started on this one. We ' ve got a cross departmental group team working on rewriting our current rules and regs. We ' re meeting regularly to accomplish that. This is where it tacked on at the end, where currently we ' ve always published these in a PDF file on the web. There ' s actually companies out there that ' ll take these documents, reformat and make them a whole lot more user friendly, aesthetically pleasing, and then have it web based where our employees could access it and we can also send out those links to other companies or people who might be looking to copy some of our regs. Um, that ' s the way it works sometimes in H R. Um, we feel this will be a good good add on to what we currently do and how we currently handle our current policies. Um, are there any questions on that request? Great. Um, the second one is dealing with an employee engagement survey. Did any, hmm. Oh, I want one too far. There it is. The employee engagement survey. Um, as a city, we ' re constantly expected to improve our performance and delivery of services to our residents. One way we can we can manage that internally is to measure and improve our level of employee engagement. Really, employee engagement consists of three components, job satisfaction, employee ' s commitment to the organization, and employee satisfaction with the organization they work for. If we can increase our employee levels of engagement and increase those, it can help us achieve strategic goals, deliver responsive services to citizens, stimulate innovation among our employees, and also help us retain ultimately retain employees as well. Um, employee engagement drives outcomes in many areas and is basically critical for employee performance. Measuring employee engagement with a survey will allow us to see where we compare to other municipalities nationwide and provide us steps where we can improve employee engagement in the future.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next, we have Courtney from Community Outreach Engagement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have requested a part time special events coordinator. This will allow us to increase the number of special events provided to Milton citizens with the increase of new parks and property. We have the opportunity to have more events and that would free me to do more outreach. But this requires staff and resources. This special events coordinator would share responsibility for the execution of existing events as well as help increase community offerings. They ' ll share responsibility for all the duties at city sponsored events, including planning, coordinating, collaborating, graphic design, social media, and all the things that go into planning a special event. They ' ll also work with me and the existing special events, part time special events coordinator, to engage volunteers, spearhead new resident outreach programs, and manage various community groups as needed, feeling this position will maintain and improve what makes Milton unique, our notable level of community events and engagement.
Any questions, Joe?
So Courtney, a big fan of engaging with our citizens and holding special events, that kind of thing, is but a part time position. So so you ' ve got capacity right now to manage what we currently provide, and so the part time position would be to extend that.
Well, to to better manage and extend, yes.
Okay.
Can I jump in? Courtney ' s being kind. She she actually doesn ' t have the resources to be able to maintain her her current level. She ' s at about a hundred and twelve percent, I believe, or something along those lines when we figured out the uh the workload there. Um, so what this she ' ll she would Can I jump in? Courtney's being kind. She she actually doesn't have the resources to be able to maintain her her current level. She's at about a hundred and twelve percent, I believe, or something along those lines when we figured out the the workload there. So what this she'll she would end up with two, that's just to manage the the current events and and the Citizens Government Academy. So what we're looking for is you'd have the two part timers, because she already has one part timer in her budget. So you'd have two part timers working in a team to be able to deal mostly with the special events type type things. What I'm looking for from Courtney is to continue to manage and grow the Citizens Government Academy because we're seeing a significant return on that investment. But where I think we have potential, an untapped untapped opportunity is to leverage Courtney more for some of our community engagement at the larger level and be able to bring some of that together. And I think we've seen some of the issues this past year with our inability to bring together people. Wood Road would be an example. If I had that, an individual working, engaging the community outside of just traditional communication, being out there, bringing people together, I think we could avoid some of those of those miscommunications and misinterpretations, roll back some of the angst that we see associated with those. I think it's just an untapped opportunity, and Courtney has a tremendous knack of being able to bring people together and come to consensus or at least agree to disagree on something. And that's I would like to see if we could leverage that more.
So so we're moving to two part time folks. Does that make more sense than an additional full time person? Do two part timers extend beyond one full timer?
Go ahead.
Thanks. I I think the way our events are structured, mostly on weekends, some in the evening, the planning that they take, the relationships that need to be built, that it takes. One full time person could do it and also be strapped. Two part times can split it pretty equally.
Okay.
I didn't say. Okay. Really quick, I mean, when I was doing the Crab Apple Community Association, I I think the CCA took over, we had like three of those events or three of the four events, Crab Apple Fest, Carbon Crab Crab Apple, Christmas Crab and Crab Apple, but pretty much the city is running all those events now. And so I can tell you from the manpower side, you know, it was, you had a lot of free help in the in the past. I don't think that's going to be there in the future. So.
You know, and I think it's important to the, you know, as we've we've grown as a city, the sense of community, in fact, the the survey results was seventy some percent. I think I saw when Chan presented that of, you know, our citizens, that being important, community events and and all that. So I think that is important. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Chief Austin from police.
Greetings, Mayor, members of council. Our two M and O initiatives this year revolve around personnel. The first is adding two full time police officer positions. The Milton Police Department has a current sworn staff of thirty nine allotments, and that includes our our supervisors and our command staff. And while we may run efficiently with thirty nine officers, historically, our challenge has come with training. Training a new officer from the time of hire to the academy through field training takes anywhere from twenty three to twenty seven weeks, which causes quite a bit of lag time. And while officers are undergoing this required training, we still have to have our sufficient fully trained officers on patrol. So having two additional officer positions will allow those officers a relief factor. Right now, we have some difficulty in getting officers training and also their their benefit time, which speaks to their their work life balance. So we're hoping that by adding two positions that we will be able to have just a little relief factor there so that we can have ample time to get these officers trained and out on the street.
I have a question, Chief. Just and you know, based on the thirty nine current sworn patrol officers, you know, how many at each, you know, each shift are actually out on our streets?
Uh, that depends on the day and the time. Typically, we fully staff, we would have four officers and one or two supervisors out working the street.
And and that was my question, because a lot of a lot of times people don't understand how many it takes to just man four people twenty four hour, twenty four seven. Thirty nine sounds like a lot, but it 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 weights down to four people covering forty square miles.
Yes, sir. And and one call can certainly zap resources in a hurry.
If I could add to that, Chief, is that all right? You actually hit it on the head. Our our challenge is not a high offending population. Our challenge is our geography. And and once you end up down one officer because of turnover, and we we all law enforcement is 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 dealing with a significant turnover, turnover rate, actually, I think we're doing okay compared to many of the others. But additionally, so you 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 let's say you drop two, those are done, they're out of the mix for nine months, because you got to train them up and then you got to field train them. So that that's really what this is about, to deal with some of that turnover and that nine month gap to get them from from applicant to police officer has a significant impact on a department of thirty nine. So that's that's what this is about. to be able to maintain our current levels of of service. There without getting too deep and boring, we we look at something called the saturation rate. We look at at how often the officers are available to answer calls. And generally, you want to make sure that they're available sixty to seventy percent of the time. We're on the cusp right now of seventy. I think that that this could have a significant impact on that. We're also looking at response times and I'd like to see some improvement in our in our response times as well. So we're going to, I would like to see what impact we have with, and that's no has nothing to do with our officers. It's the geography, it's the traffic, and it's the number of officers we have deployed. I want to see what impact this can have as well on that.
Well, I would also add, I'm sure population has increased has something to do with it. You know, when the city was first organized, there was somewhere around twenty four thousand people, I think. You know, now the census is going to creep up to close to forty thousand people. So, you know, with the same amount of officers. So. Anybody else? All right.
And our second initiative is reallocating one lieutenant position to captain position. Two years ago, the Milton Police Department had one captain that retired who had over thirty years of experience. At that time, our command staff had just reorganized and our lieutenants were just settling into new positions. And two, were also fairly new to their rank. At the time, in my estimation, we we didn't have anyone that was prepared to take that that captain's role on. As a stopgap, I moved one lieutenant over to command our criminal investigation division. But through continued staff development, gaining experience, I'm now confident that we have several viable captain candidates internally, and certainly didn't want to go externally when I knew we had the the talent there that just needed to be developed. So my goal would be to set forth a captain's process, promotional process to vet our current lieutenants for that position.
Okay. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Carol, Laura, anything on the last couple items?
No, I appreciate the the waiting for, you know, the the internal candidate to emerge and become, you know, promotable. So appreciate that, Captain Chief Austin.
Okay.
I would add that I think you all have been extremely thorough and efficient in managing that process. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Chief Edgar from the Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three initiatives for FY twenty that I'd like to present. The first one is a staffing relief factor for the Fire Department. Currently, the Fire Department has eighteen members assigned to each shift with a minimum staff of fifteen. So that allows for three employees to be off on vacation, or, you know, taking their PTO time, their earned PTO time. Over this past three years, we've experienced vacancies, retirements, FMLAs, sick, and which has forced our staff to either work overtime, be forced to work overtime because they have other obligations on their time off, or that we've had battalion chiefs and chief officers where they've had to give up vacation days in order to maintain that minimum staffing each shift. So what we're asking for is two additional staff members that we're heading assigned to the shifts, and this will allow them to fill in the vacancies where needed. They would have to rotate around depending on which shift would need those particular those particular bodies to fill those vacancies. So I believe that this will satisfy that need moving forward. And this past year since two thousand nineteen, since January, we've had one hundred and sixty two, one hundred and sixty four shifts, one hundred and forty one of them had a vacancy on it. So this would help fill those that need there on behalf of answering questions.
I have a question. When you mentioned that people would have to be forced, basically forced to to work overtime or, you know, lose personal time off, I'm assuming that's an additional cost for the city.
It is.
For someone to work to work overtime and and have pay. So.
Yes, sir.
So when it's all said and done, that would offset some of that, correct?
That that's our hope, that this the additional staffing would reduce the overtime need.
So it it could be even a net neutral at some point.
Right. And and the other side of that is when you have an employee who's expect to get off, whether he has his, you know, the next day when he finishes his shift, whether he has a family event planned, a birthday party, or even go to another part time job, we've created this undue stress, an unneeded stress on them when they're forced to work overtime.
Joe?
So Chief, did you arrive at two scientifically or are we, because you used the word hope and I always worry about hope being the strategy when it comes to these kinds of things. Because I would agree with you that it's a critical thing that you're trying to accomplish there. And so I would want to make sure that you had, you know, the resources that you need to really make this a reality. Because not only do we have the savings from overtime, but we also have the savings from recycling employees who decide to go someplace else because they're working too hard in the city of Milton. And I don't know what your turnover rate looks like, but but those are the kinds of things that we can impact as well.
Correct. I'll I'll step in. The chief was looking for three originally. One for each of his shifts.
Oh, and the guy that made him go two was talking right now, is that what you're saying?
It is. It is. And and it was for the very, the reason I went to two on this was for the very same reason I did with police. I want to see what impact two instead of three additionals have based on turnover, because, well, I can't I can't quantify, I could quantify if I if if we if we did the thorough analysis. But I generally I can tell you that part of what's impacting our inability to either allow days off or to be fully staffed is the time it takes to get somebody up and running. So we basically run both of our departments at just above what we need to be able to staff every day. The variable that's not figured into that is the lead time to turn somebody into an from an applicant into a firefighter or a police officer.
So Stephen, do we have any concerns right now about, and I don't want to call it a mandatory PTO policy, but one of the factors that's critical in job satisfaction and longevity for resources such as this is that when they claim they're going to go on vacation or when they say they're going to take a day off, they don't have to think twice about it. They they know that they can do that.
So, yes, I agree with what you're saying, but from a from a quarter century in law in law enforcement, firefighters understand the same thing. When you sign up for these jobs, you understand that there is, sometimes you're going to miss birthdays and you're it it can happen. What we would like to do is we would like to reduce the number of times or not have as many of those times, without a doubt.
We're not we're not offending that that rule any more than anybody else is, is what you're saying.
I we're I think we do a pretty good job of not offending that.
Okay. All right. Good.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Uh, the other two items kind of go hand in hand. One is a Stairmaster device and the other one is called a ladder mill. And what this is, is this part of our physical fitness program. And it's imperative that our staff remain physically fit. We perform annual physicals with a doctor. We actually perform, what am I trying to say? The physical assessment is what I'm looking for. So annually, we have to perform that as well. In addition, we have a policy in place where you have to spend sixty minutes each shift and work out. And we purchased our current Stairmaster that we have today, used about just over five years ago, and it's reached kind of its end of life. It's used every day, it's used for every physical, it's used for new candidates, new applicants, we run them through a physical agility test. So it's time to replace that device. And then the other device is the ladder mill, which is also part of that same type of program. It's called a Jacob's ladder, and it also does a physical assessment and see how well you can perform those tasks. And these are critical to the firefighters when they're performing their task on a fire scene or any other type of emergency that they're physically fit. And these two devices here help us perform that and do that. Any questions on that?
Questions on that? Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Robert Drury and Sarah Leeters from Pub Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Mayor. The bid unusual. We're going to co-present this. I can assure you if there are any questions, I'll probably be referring to Sarah for those. But I do appreciate your time. We're going to present two M and O initiatives and two capital initiatives. The first is an M and O initiative that's sitting in front of you. It's a citywide traffic count and speed study. First of all, I initiate, excuse me, I applaud staff's initiative to to present this. This is a baseline data of speed throughout the the city. This speed study is critical, particularly if you start looking at doing analytics and improvements in the future. It's it's critical to have this kind of baseline data. So the hundred and twenty five thousand dollars gets gets you started on having some baseline data, just as as this needs. Any questions on that one?
Can I jump in on that one? Yes. I apologize. Welcome, Robert. Thank you. So so you're all you you know, one of the complaints we get, significant complaints is these are the speeds throughout the city on various roads. And what I don't know that the one twenty five, how far that will bring us in in my long term objective of having having I want to I want to take a complete look at appropriate speed citywide. Generally, if you draw a line from Providence Road across Bethany Bend and across that 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 part of the city, you can separate where the where the speeds should probably change quite a bit. But what we see is we see roads like Freemanville, where you have forty five mile an hour speed limits, but yet you have more and more single family homes being built on outside of subdivisions where they're they're coming in and out of their driveways onto onto roads like Freemanville, Birmingham. And the speed limit of forty five with the Georgia law that that using radar, you can't write for under ten miles an hour over quite often brings those speeds upwards of fifty and fifty five miles an hour, and people have a very difficult time getting in and out of their driveways, and it's it it it's dangerous. What I'm hoping to be able to is have a comprehensive speed study, look at other environmental other, look at environmental factors outside of the traditional DOT eighty fifth percentile, which just to refresh your memory, that you generally you do a speed study, you you put the speed detectors, for lack of a better or more technical term out there, that determines how fast people are going. Generally, what DOT looks at is what's eighty five percent of the people going at, and that's generally when they're comfortable going at that speed, that's generally what the speed limit should be. What that doesn't take into account are the people that are trying to get in and out of their homes. It's very easy to go fifty, sixty miles an hour on Freemanville Road and do it comfortably, especially in straightaway. But it's not so comfortable when you're trying to get out of one of those homes. And I want to see that be, I want to see how we can incorporate that into our argument with DOT to be able to to lower the speed limits and be able to get our radar permits for it.
Yeah. At the end, I think you answered my question. So ultimately, we're trying to get data that'll helps us have an argument against G dot to be able to lower the speeds. So by doing a comprehensive one, we'll need a citywide example to show them. I was gonna ask if it may make may make more sense to try to pinpoint specific problem areas, like you're mentioning. Just curious if that would be more effective, because I want to make sure the data is right, so that we can use it.
It could be, but generally what I'm seeing when, you know, I could I could identify Providence as as one example of if I was going to go to one right off the bat. But generally, people will will say, well, what about us? And there, I really think we should take a comprehensive approach. Originally, I wanted to look at this from from below the Providence Bethany Bend line, south and and north of that, but even that was being, I think, a little myopic. I want to see what we can do in a with a comprehensive approach. And we're going to have to put this out on the street to even see, you know, what kind of responses I get. It could be, but generally what I ' m seeing when, you know, I could I could identify Providence as as one example of if I was going to go to one right off the bat. Um, but generally people will will say, well, what about us? Um, and there. I really think we should take a comprehensive approach. Originally, I wanted to look at this from from below the Providence Bethany uh bend line south and and north of that, but even that was being I think a little myopic. Um, I want to see what we can do in a with a comprehensive approach, and we ' re going to have to put this out on the street to even see, you know, what kind of responses I get back on this. But I think the city is long overdue for this comprehensive look. Um, you make a very valid point. Yes, if you were if you were going to tell me I ' ll let you do it in three locations, not citywide, I could probably pick out those three locations, but I think the city is due for an overall look.
whatever data we can present to G dot. That ' s most effective is what I want to see happen. So.
I need some experts in the field that could help strength bolster our argument.
Cool. Okay.
The other MNO initiative I have is a facility technician service. Um, as you may know, I ' m I ' m not sure if you know or not, but facility maintenance is a one person department. Uh, this technician will give us the opportunity to have a part time individual. Uh, we anticipate consulting that out at first, a part time individual to respond as needed for when when the manager is busy or occupied doing other things. Uh, and quite often he is busy doing other things and he can ' t pull away to go address a minor plumbing issue or or electrical issue or unlock something. So this part time individual would give him the ability to do that without pulling away from his normal normal duties.
And I think just to clarify that, this not, you know, it won ' t be a direct adding cost because this will offset, you know, emergency calls or or, you know, calls to a plumber or an electrician to come fix something minor. Um, so hopefully we ' ll negate out the cost over time.
That that ' s correct.
Thank you.
Any questions. Laura, uh, Carol, you good?
I ' m good. I am, thank you.
Okay.
The other one I have, um, well, actually this is the hawk. Okay, I ' ll.
So we ' ve talked about in the Crab Apple area before through the transportation plans, the placemaking plans about pedestrian signals. So this initiative is um to to further develop plans and and bid for a pedestrian hybrid beacon. We have a current location that uses what ' s called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon that ' s in front of the elementary school. We ' ve heard some complaints recently about vehicles not always always obeying that. And the Hawk is is definitely more of a um official signal. So we ' d be looking at at um we did some counts out near the elementary school to see what kind of volumes we have where there are kids currently crossing. So we ' re working on some more analysis and we ' ll determine the exact location. But um that ' s what this initiative is for.
Any questions on that? We get a lot of comments from citizens on that. Okay.
Okay, and the last initiative we have on capital is the uh traffic signal battery backups. This is uh is is a good initiative because currently those current older batteries are technologically not up to speed. Uh, they ' re not smart batteries. These batteries would be smart batteries, and we place it, I think up to five strategic signals um for when we have those power surges or those those as you can refer to be brownouts where there is a flux in power. Typically, those old batteries are just shut down and then go into flash mode. These battery backup so it allow kind of sense that, allow it to continue to operate without going into flash mode. And as you know, is when they ' re in flash mode, you have to deploy an officer or somebody as well until they reset. So this is is a good investment for those uh those uh traffic
Right. Question on that. How, what ' s the lifespan of these type batteries? Is this a fairly long term
About ten years, I believe. Yeah, I believe they ' re about ten years.
Okay. Okay.
and they give you three hours also. So if you have a power outage, um instead of the the intersection going out and having to deploy a police officer, you about depending on how many lights you have on the intersection, um you ' ll have three hours of life in it, which is a great, uh, uh, just great.
Okay. Any any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jim Craig with Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are presenting five initiatives, four in MNO and one in capital. The first one is a reclassification of the current part- time position that we have in Parks and Rec and to classify that as a full- time position. This year, we filled that with two interns who had excellent success in terms of getting them going. And we can see firsthand with the growth that is happening in Parks and Rec and the work that it ' s taking. Uh, we would definitely benefit first and foremost because it would allow us to shift duties that currently exist and allow me to focus on the implementation of the F Y twenty twenty seven, excuse me, the twenty twenty seven master plan and allow time to do more, focusing on trying to develop more programming. Uh, we is uh clearly in need here. So we ' re talking about having a full timer to shift duties and still maintain service and observation of Bell Memorial Park and the other parks that we have. Questions? Thank you. Item number two, you may recall that at the last council meeting I gave a report, staff report, we talked about camp joyful souls and how we would like to revamp it and tune it up. What we ' re doing here is we are requesting changing one of the positions from a camp supervisor to a camp manager. To have that person more engaged in the process of not just running camp, but setting up the camp, organizing who are the staff members, who will join that for that summer, evaluating the uh campers and helping set up the program. In other words, put the people in charge of the camp in charge of the camp. Okay. Any questions? The next initiative involves a scholarship program. This was something that the Parks and Rec board felt very strongly about. We ' ve discussed embedded it through. The idea is to provide funding for uh people in Milton who wish to participate in Milton programming, but economically are disadvantaged, not able to. We ' d like to come up with the yes for any child who wants to come play. And so this provides money for that purpose. Any questions?
Just a question. Uh, Do you have a question for you on that? Is there is a great program to have that for these kids, but is there any kind of a reach out for any corporate sponsorships for something like that as well, or has it just got to be city funds?
That ' s certainly something we could consider. We hadn ' t done so at this time. Uh, as I said, the Parks and Rec Board, uh, and I agree that this is there is a need. And uh, I think if we were able to put the resources into trying to find some type of corporate sponsorships, I think you would find some enthusiastic support. But I ' d like to get the program going and show that the need is there. And I think that would potentially make it easier sell to organization staff for their help.
Okay. Joe. Yeah, and you go, maybe hit that support level of sponsorship. I mean, are you aware of any circumstances where the whole family, how much it was going to cost? They said they couldn ' t do it.
We have some circumstances uh where that has been brought not necessarily to the city, but to our program partners. Uh, so that ' s that was some the genesis of this idea. Uh, and so
Jim, could I jump in? we we could also leverage the the information, the data we have regarding the free and reduced lunch programs in our schools. Um, and because we don ' t necessarily there there are some people that just think it ' s off the table. They have no they don ' t even a chance. Um, so in working in partnership with our schools, they ' re not going to give us the who ' s, but we could potentially connect them and say, give, provide them the information and then their social workers, whatever administration of the school can provide those people with that information, see if we can ' t create more of a of a pull strategy that way. I mean to jump in on you, but that is good, good information for us to leverage.
And if I may add, over the last few years, uh, the city staff has been working with local schools through the social workers to identify families that won ' t have Christmas. So, uh, that ' s been quite a joy for us to do, and that has helped us build those relationships with the social workers who could help us expand this program. Okay.
I have a question. And I apologize, I couldn ' t hear what Joe Longoria said, but Jim, is 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 the scholarship opportunity maybe in response to some trends that you ' re seeing with the MOU and
I wouldn ' t attribute this scholarship as something that the M O U as much as it ' s something that we ' ve identified that there are kids who are not able to participate. And so we ' re we ' re trying to we we are trying to come up with a way to come up with a needs based assessment. Uh, just as Steve talked about, the free and reduced lunch program, that was the basis of how the Parks and Rec board recommended that a person qualify.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, the next one is a participation reimbursement program, which is an idea we are working on to try and come up with a way to identify that programming, which we should be having but don ' t have right now. And perhaps if we are able to um provide a reimbursement for a if it ' s something, a program we should be having, and we can ' t offer it, perhaps it offered through another city, and then perhaps we could offer a reimbursement for it, I will tell you that it ' s a new idea. And starting this Thursday, the Parks and Rec board is going to be taking this up as an idea to look at, to look at what programs we offer, to what programs should we offer, what are offered through other agencies, what should we start planning to do, what should we start doing right away through another agency. And so the concept here is if the Parks and Rec board comes up with a recommendation for the council and should council in turn approve that, this is provides funding
to implement that. Don ' t think I would say, look forward to our parking rec board looking at that, but I think it ' s something we don ' t need to take lightly that we need to make sure that we really assess it. And to your point, if it ' s something that our Parks and Rec board, staff and council feel that is something the city should provide, cause if not, we could open up Pandora ' s box and try to beat everything to everybody. So.
Yeah, and I agree that ' s, you know, that ' s obviously not possible, but I will tell you, and I ' ve told you this before, uh, Parks and Rec board is very engaged group of people. You ' ve got some great people serving there, and they ' re chomping at the paid to get on this. Good.
we we met um recently and um my my request was that uh they work together with the Parks and Rec staff, determine what it is that that we should be offering right now. That ' s the criteria I ' m looking for, right now, if I can ' t because of of some resource uh shortage. And um I ' ll agree with Jim, they ' re they ' re excited about about jumping on this.
Good. The final initiative I have is a capital initiative request, and that is to put aside money to be able to develop an additional lighted baseball field. I think proper term is I ' m supposed to say lit baseball field. Um, but the idea here is we know that baseball is growing. I personally participated in skill assessments this past Saturday, and we have it would appear that we ' re going to have the biggest fall baseball program uh that we ' ve had since Bell ' s been rebuilt, and uh, it looks like we ' re looking at over five hundred kids. I am quite confident that come spring, we ' re going to be exceeding last year ' s numbers. And we we believe we ' re going to be needing another baseball field. So this is a request for the funding to support that where and when the opportunity presents itself.
And I just want to add that that ' s very important there that even if we fund this in the budget, if the opportunity is not there, it doesn ' t make sense, it does not have to be spent.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, and that ' s why we requested is a capital improvement because the opportunity could present itself tomorrow or could present itself a year and a half from now. But I ' d like to request the funding. So we the opportunity and they will, opportunities will present themselves. I ' d like to be able that we as a city could move quickly to try and address this.
I anticipate that we ' ll have the opportunity more sooner than later. And um and just like you said, Mayor, if if for some reason it didn ' t, that that funding stays right where it is. Correct.
Or or could we shift to just something else or even remove it at some point? Okay. Any questions on that? Laura Carroll?
No, thank you. No, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have Parag Agarwal with Community Development.
uh the city ' s comprehensive plan. uh perhaps one of the most important projects which the city will be initiating in the next fiscal year is the rewrite of the city ' s comprehensive plan. uh As per the state ' s law, the city of Milton is required to adopt a new comprehensive plan by October of twenty twenty one. uh As you know, the city ' s first comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand eleven, and it was uh updated in two thousand sixteen. And as per the state law, there has to be a there has to be a rewrite after every ten years with the update after every five years. uh As you know, the city ' s comprehensive plan puts together the vision of the overall development of the city and talks about issues such as land use, transportation, housing, environment, and how we can uh how we can preserve and enhance the character and heritage of the city of Milton. We are planning to start the process later this year. We are expecting this process to be around fourteen to eighteen months long, and we are expecting that the city ' s comprehensive plan will be adopted in late spring or early summers of two thousand twenty one. Last year, uh, what I have heard last time when the city of Milton adopted its comprehensive plan in two thousand eleven, it was a three- year project. So we are trying to, it was the first comprehensive plan. So, but we are trying to restrict, limit the timeframe to around fourteen to sixteen months. Any questions?
Any questions on the cost of comprehensive plan. Okay.
Uh, the second initiative which I have is the refinement of the form based code. Uh, as you know, the crab app, the form based code was adopted in June of two thousand twelve. And the D F E D form based code was adopted in two thousand thirteen. So based on the experience now we have of several years and based on the experience we have of various projects that have been constructed under these codes, there is a need to review and refine some sections of these codes to be in line with the with the recent studies that have been conducted by the city and also to meet expectations of the city residents. Uh, as we know, uh, the city of Milton is also conducting an economic development study for the Deerfield corridor that ' s being done by R K G. And R K G also gave a very good presentation to the city council a couple of months back. Uh, our department is also conducting a study to review our T D R programs, transfer development rights programs. And these two studies are also making some very good recommendations of how we can refine our form based codes. So staff is proposing to evaluate these codes, and if needed, make suitable amendments to be in line with the recommendations of these studies and expectations of the Milton residents.
Any questions?
questions? On call planning services, consulting services as need on needed basis to include but not limited to code revisions, zoning overlay districts, text amendments, site planning and public outreach. So this will allow the department staff to complete various tasks and projects and work more efficiently. So if so if we are working on some specific project and there ' s a gap in staff skills, we can hire a professional to complete that task. So some of the examples, some of the project examples that come to my mind, like number one, a couple of months back when we discovered some mistakes in our historical zoning applications, I came in front of the city council and basically said that we want to be more proactive and we would like to have an audit of all the previous zoning applications. So this that audit can be funded through this pool of money. The second example that come to my mind is like a couple of months back, I made a presentation in front of the front of the city council talking about the development of overall crab apple downtown. And as part of the presentation, I I presented a three D model of downtown crab apple. And I also presented some renderings of the park that ' s being developed uh in on Mayfield Road along with the lake. So we basically engaged the consultant for that that three D model and also for the rendering of that park. That helped to mitigate the concerns of the residents because they were very concerned that city was draining the lake. So once this saw that rendering, they were able to say, okay, no, there will be a park that will be in its place. The other thing which we on call planning services, consulting services as need on needed basis to include but not limited to code revisions, zoning overlay districts, text amendments, site planning and public outreach. So this will allow the department staff to complete various tasks and projects and work more efficiently. So if so if we are working on some specific project and there ' s a gap in staff skills, we can hire a professional to complete that task. So some of the examples, some of the project examples that come to my mind, like number one, a couple of months back when we discovered some mistakes in our historical zoning applications, I came in front of the city council and basically said that we want to be more proactive and we would like to have an audit of all the previous zoning applications. So this that audit can be funded through this pool of money. The second example that come to my mind is like a couple of months back, I made a presentation in front of the front of the city council talking about the development of overall crab apple downtown. And as part of the presentation, I I presented a three D model of downtown crab apple. And I also presented some renderings of the park that ' s being developed uh in on Mayfield Road along with the lake. So we basically engaged the consultant for that that three D model and also for the rendering of that park. That helped to mitigate the concerns of the residents because they were very concerned that city was draining the lake. So once this saw that rendering, they were able to say, okay, no, there will be a park that will be in its place. The other thing which we were just talking today in the afternoon was like our department is working on a three million dollar DNR grant application, and we need some environmental analysis and some uh uh transportation analysis. So it ' s basically filling the staff skill gaps that can be used for that pool of money.
Any questions Okay
Uh the next initiative which I have like in this year our department is requesting to create a new position of a development review manager. As we know, the community development department is responsible for uh managing the overall development and land conservation activities of the city of Milton, and we have various groups, various sections like the planning and zoning that is responsible for maintaining the city ' s comprehensive plan, LCI plans, all the zoning activities. We have land disturbance group, land development group, that is responsible for issuing land disturbance permits, for uh they are responsible for plan reviews, issuing three removal permits, and then we have a building permit section that is responsible for issuing the building permits and conducting uh uh building inspections. So when a development project goes through the city of Milton, you have to go through various stages of the development review process. Uh but in the last seven or eight months, I have seen our development review operations are very disconnected and disjointed. And there ' s a coordinate and there ' s a uh there ' s a need of promoting more coordination between the various operations. So right now, if you want to build a house in the city of Milton, and you want to obtain a and if suppose you want to obtain five permits, the way it works, you have to contact or trace five different staff persons of my department to get they to get your permits. And we think it ' s a very poor customer service. So for example, our department is reviewing a high profile project, a bit controversial project, I will not say the name here, and the property owner is working with seven different staff persons of my department. And this is causing a lot of mistakes because everyone is basically responsible for their own functions, and if me or Steve wants to get status update of that project, we have to put all seven or eight persons in the room because they all talk about their own individual functions.
Parag, could I just add on to that, so we are seeing an issue with uh with errors, internal errors. When Parag came in, one of the first things I tasked him with was was evaluating community development from top to bottom. And one of the things he recognized quite quickly was was a lack of structure. Everybody reported to the community development director. So everybody just kind of did their own thing and and it was left to them to make sure across all of the different sections that they that they communicated. That resulted in in site plan errors, sometimes using the wrong site plan. Um you need somebody coordinating that that aspect of it. And uh that was one of the things that Parag identified upfront. Yes, I agree. It is a huge it is one of the complaints that we get from a lot of developers and builders that there doesn ' t appear to be any coordination from our end and they ' re dealing with seven different people. Um but internally, we ' re seeing errors, duplicative duplication of work, um just lack of efficiency associated with it. We need a fairly high level person to be able to manage that. Um so Parag is not similar to what we talked about with Jim is not putting out fires every day, but looking three and five years out for the city to make sure we continue to move in the direction the council is looking for us to move into. Right now Parag spends his day putting out fires.
And I I ' d want to add that too, because you know, I I certainly understand and certainly understand understand the the value or or what to from the person applying for the permit, whether it ' s homeowner or builder or or developer, but I ' d want to make sure that there ' s equal or more benefit to the citizens and the city both with catching mistakes and and making the process more efficient. So it ' s actually both less money for the city long term costs, but also benefits with catching catching and things and and overall better development um over night on on the city. If would you agree that that
Uh yes, definitely. So this position will basically promote efficiency, it will promote customer service, it will promote coordination and as Steve mentioned, the most important thing for me is it will help to limit mistakes.
Okay. Yeah. Um, so my wife has worked for dental offices for a long time, and every morning they get together and they have a meeting to discuss patients coming in and things like that. Um, I ' m sure I would be asked by her or other residents as well, why doesn ' t the group just get together and have a meeting to figure out what needs to be done that day rather than hire someone else specifically. I ' m just curious.
So we do have our weekly meeting, and we also meet on a very regular basis. So it ' s basically, as Steve mentioned, it ' s about internal coordination and also the coordination with external residents. So what we are saying that this position will serve as the one point of contact for all the Milton residents so that and we will make sure that the building permit all the building permits are being issued on a timely manner. So that person that the residents of Milton will not have to trace five different staff persons. Uh the Milton resident will basically contact this one development review manager. It will be his or her job to basically coordinate functions of the staff persons and give an answer.
The complexity and the dynamics of a of a site development, um, even throughout the day changes. It ' s uh it would, I understand where you ' re coming from with that, but I I don ' t know that it necessarily carries over as easily. Fair question.
Yeah, and that ' s just a question people would ask. And so obviously, if that were to happen though, it would be one where it allow you to have more high level decisions as well because they ' d be dealing more with the day to day and the, the nuances of all the zoning stuff that we try to avoid, but we want to get sucked into. So that ' s that would be more of a planning or zoning or future process of what we do that you would be doing. be be more free to do those things than handling the inter relations of everybody. So. I got it.
Okay, I mean that ' s, I mean I was gonna say that ' s probably one of the biggest complaints that I probably have too is people call me up and ask about stuff. All right.
Uh so the next initiative is the land development manager. Uh so currently Melissa Brennan serves as the land development manager of the city. Uh she has been working thus for almost two years. She is responsible for issuing the land disturbance permits. She ' s also responsible for managing the plan review operations of the city. She is managing the e permitting operations of the city. Uh she has been here for two years, but unfortunately she does not have a job description. Uh or the correct job description. So we basically worked with the H R department uh to create a job description of the duties which she is currently performing. And we did a salary analysis based on the job description of what she is doing right now. And this salary adjustment is basically based on the salary recommendations of the H R department and our the salaries which we have in our current department.
She ' s been working out of class for for a while, and we ' re looking to to bring our community development operation up a notch here, and and we need her to be performing this function. She performs in this function quite well already. Now we should compensate her for it.
long term. Okay. Any questions on that? Okay.
Again, the similar issues with the job description of Michelle McIntosh Ross, she is currently the principal planner in our department, and recently she has been taking much more managerial responsibilities. As you know, she is the person who is managing the city ' s trail master plan. She is also managing the master plan of the former Milton Country Club. So we again looked at the we worked with the HR department to make sure that the city is compensating her based on her job responsibilities. And this salary bump of around five percent is based on the recommendations of the HR department based on her job responsibilities.
they ' re also both now managing people, um which is a significant departure from where they were.
Okay. Any questions?
So this is this is it, right? Okay.
Okay, just Carol or Laura, any questions for Parag?
A question. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for this book.
Okay, now I ' d like to take a moment to go back and talk about the operations variances from nineteen to twenty from the expenditure side. So before you have fiscal year seventeen and eighteen actuals and fiscal year nineteen amended and twenty proposed budgets, and here you have the variance between nineteen and twenty. And I ' m going to give you the highlights of what are causing those variances. First, in the mayor and council department, the variance of ten percent is being driven by the request to have both a fall and spring retreat with council and upper management as opposed to just a fall retreat in FY nineteen. In the city clerks department, that sixty eight percent increase is being driven mostly by the fact that every other year the city is responsible for a larger portion of election costs. This year we are having to pay eighty four thousand seven hundred twenty four for the general election. Additionally, we added the scanning of archive files into the city clerks department as she is over all of the file retention. That is about sixty five thousand dollars. And in the last amendment you guys approved of part- time clerk from Briggs and Associates who is a special needs applicant. And that is this is including a full year ' s salary for that person. In the city managers department,
Can can
Go ahead, Laura.
Sorry. No, I just wanted, um, I ' m sorry. I should have waited. I can wait until you ' re finished.
Nope. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Laura.
So I I just for the benefit of our citizens, can you just describe what our retreats include and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands you know why we have them and the length and where they all start and stuff like that. Thank you.
And I ' ll just let Steve yeah Steve.
Is that all right? So the retreat has has many purposes. First, it 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 brings council away from the day- to- day rigmarole of your actual lives and jobs because, let ' s face it, you all have a you all have to maintain a livelihood. So it separate it it does our best to kind of separate you from that and bring you into an environment where you all can can discuss strategic objectives, long- term visioning and things along those lines. What we ' re looking for, one of the things you ' re seeing here, is we are about to roll into a very important period for the city of Milton, our next strategic planning period and our comprehensive planning period. And I think our council members are going to need that opportunity more so than we ' ve had at least since I ' ve been in this role to be able to contemplate where you see the city going. And you ' re going to have more information at your fingertips to be able to start crafting and structuring um how we ' re going to move forward in the strategic in the strategic planning. Um, did I sufficiently answer that question?
That ' s that ' s good. I just wanted to make sure that we were, uh, you know, it ' s not, uh, usually, you know, it ' s it ' s something that we don ' t do. I I don ' t think we did one last year, correct?
Um, we did not. We should have.
We ' re we ' re I ' ll add we ' re overdue. And um also just for the 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 publics and and new council members, um, we have been in the past very efficient and I ' m I ' m confident we will move forward. Any retreat we do, we will uh spend the money very wisely. The majority of the cost is is a professional moderator and as well as staff. And as Steve said, it allows council to get together, take all the concerns and issues that they ' re hearing about and they see and work together to come up with a long- term vision and and prioritize the goals and whatnot moving forward. So, um, it it ' s very beneficial for the, the health of the city and and for our citizens. But again, the majority of the cost is really in just the training. And again, the value in having professional training or moderators in those um retreats is the knowledge that we all learn from someone that ' s out, you know, all over the place, at different cities and and knows a lot of knows what ' s going on and and can can help uh you know make our our time together more efficient and lead us to the the right conclusions for the for the city.
I would say, Mayor, that in the last in the last several, I ' m sorry, I apologize. Um, the last several, they uh almost a hundred percent of the cost of an associated with the uh with facilitator moderator and anybody that we have coming in to to instruct.
Right, and and I just I don ' t think we need to make that comment, but I want to make that comment because some I ' m sure there ' s been uh other cities that have gone to Las Vegas or Hawaii or something for a retreat and that ' s uh we usually uh can use a rented boardroom for fifty dollars or whatever even uh you know is
We actually get to gruss.
Yeah, the Y M C A or whatever that ' s donated, so it ' s it ' s not that and it ' s uh usually some cheap sandwiches for meals.
Okay, that ' s exactly what I was asking because I haven ' t done one. So thank you.
Okay, so I ' ll continue with the city managers department. We ' re seeing a decrease in this department. With the departure of our second assistant assistant city manager, we will no longer be filling that position and instead we have hired a public works director specifically, and you ' ll see the increase in that department relating to moving the position over there. Additionally, we will not have a citizen survey in F Y twenty, so that has caused a decrease as well. In general administration, we have recognized some areas where we could reduce budget lines and increase savings on supply purchases through contract opportunities and keeping an eye on supplies. So we have reduced there. In the finance department, that increase is driven by the approval of the full time accounting manager position and full year funding for that position. In legal, we are actually seeing a hope for a decrease. In F Y nineteen, the city was part of a few large class action lawsuits that are not expected to occur in F Y twenty. For information services, we have a couple of things going on. First, we have moved to a contract with a third party consultant. That is causing a little bit of increase as we implement the remainder of the laser fist program. We also have a G I S analyst coming on full time to join our current employees so we can have two strong in that area. We will also be looking to increase the I T managers hours. As we have recognized some of the things we can be improving upon, he ' ll be in house more often to be able to address those. Though some of those increases are being offset by some decreases where we are allocating costs related to bandwidth and telephone lines to specific departments. So where you saw it in the past, the fire department or some of the other facilities we have, their lines were in here. We ' re dispersing those to departments specific now. In human resources, the majority of this increase is driven by the request for a three percent across the board market adjustment for all city staff. Other than that, the only real major variance we ' re seeing is a request for three thousand dollars for employee appreciation. Then we have risk management. We ' ve looked hard at the trends of the costs and where our insurance costs are going, and we saw room for a reduction of the budget according to actuals we ' ve been receiving. Next, we have general government buildings. We made a decision to remove Bethwell and Broadwell and move them back over to the active parks department. But that decrease is being offset by the increase of putting the phone lines for city hall into this department from I T as we just spoke about, and also looking to have some improvements over at the birdhouse, including exterior painting and a little bit of landscaping. And as we spoke about earlier in revenue section, part of that will be offset by the eighteen thousand dollars coming over from capital improvement fund. In both communications and community outreach engagement, they do not really have a major variance other than the three percent across the board. Moving on to municipal court, police and fire. These three departments will be moving into the new public safety complex on highway nine around September. This depart all three departments have requests for abilities to do some of the furnishings including artwork, some rugs, racks to hold some forms, things like that. So you ' ll see that throughout these three departments. In addition, the police department, they are looking to expand the L P R fleet. That ' s your license plate reader fleet. They ' re going to attempt to add it into one more area of the city to see if that can have a greater impact. And then in public works, as we spoke about, you will see that we have the hiring of the new public works director and his salary for a full year. We ' ve also in F Y nineteen transferred out some of the funding into community development for the some of the plan review, and they ' re now asking for some of their funding to be returned to them for additional engineering services as needed. Additionally, the largest increase is being driven in public works by the right of way mowing contract. As you know, our current contractor stepped out and we had to replace them. The new contract is significantly more expensive than the original. Also looking to add fifteen thousand dollars to do overhead trimming to keep some of the trees out of the view of the right of way. Also looking to add additional two times a month versus one time a month, mowings in areas where there are curb and gutter and beauty strips to keep those more refined. Now, you ' ll notice in the next area where we have parks and recreation active and then passive parks. In the F Y nineteen amendment, we ' re going to talk about this as well, we ' re looking to separate out those passive and green spaces from the active areas so people can more readily be able to see how those are developing. We ' ve also implemented line item specific to each park so we can better track what each facility is costing us. As I mentioned, we moved both Bethwell and Broadwell back over to the active parks and recreation department. But you are seeing an overall decrease and that is being mostly driven by the fact that the I G A with Alpharetta is halved for F Y twenty. It ' s the last payment we will have to make regarding activities that continue through the end of the agreement. And then in the passive parks department, that is wholly the care for the newly purchased properties, including Birmingham Park. We moved Birmingham Park over there as And then in the passive parks department, that is wholly the care for the newly purchased properties, including Birmingham Park. We moved Birmingham Park over there as of right now it is pretty passive, so we have moved that over to this department. We have Wood Road, the passive portion of the former Milton Country Club, Lackey Road, Belmont Farms, Wells, Webb, Hamby, all those types of properties will be maintained within this department. And as we spoke about earlier, about that eighty thousand dollars around in self tower lease fees are going to offset that one hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars in care. In community development, we have moved the arborist and plan review functions back into this department. Additionally, we moved out the scanning to the city clerk department so that kind of had an offsetting effect. In economic development, we've had a decrease. The Buxton Group and RKG Group's studies are complete. And we also have removed the funding request for the incubator program until we have some results from RKG to determine next steps and then we'll come before you with that. In the debt service area, you will see that we have debt service prepared for the payment on Bell Memorial build out revenue bond and the first year's interest only payments for the public safety complex. In future years, we will have some offsetting funds for this as well as we'll see the purchase of station forty three in FY twenty. So we'll no longer have those lease payments and we're hoping to renegotiate the Bell Memorial Bond to go down. And lastly, the Deerfield lease will no longer be an expense we have to incur. I think that about covers, our maintenance and operating. If anyone has any questions, I'll stop to take those now.
Any questions? Are there any questions, Laura Carroll?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Joe.
So Bernadette, you had
Do you want me to go back?
implied in these numbers and the increases or the changes were, I think you mentioned something about um cost of living increases for all salaries, that kind of thing.
Yes, sir.
In the presentation that preceded this, we had a couple of examples where we called out specifically changes that we wanted to make in salaries. So it was either because the position changed or the responsibilities changed or something like that.
That's correct.
is the practice that we're because we've done this all kinds of different ways over the past years, is what we're trying to focus on now, normal cost of living increases are just going to be part of this piece. And anything that would be outside of cost of living, we're going to call out as special. Is that correct?
we found it to be a little more transparent to actually call out specifically any adjustments we want to do based on job descriptions, level of work that people are doing that maybe aren't being compensated so everyone can see that clearly and then just have the across the boards within the general fund operating.
Okay.
Can can I just address one thing? It's it's not based on a cost of living increase. Um, it's it's
I couldn't come up with the words, the right words.
No worries. It it it's a market adjustment. Even now, we're still falling in some areas, but I just
Annual performance reviews, whatever you mean.
It it is uh cost of living, just one, it's not it's not associated with that.
Yeah, yes. Got it. A small percent of the cost of living increase.
Because it depends on where you live.
Okay, so next I'd like to go through just fairly quickly, touch on some of our special revenue funds. You can see in the special events budget, we are not anticipating really a change in the revenues received. We're expecting a slight increase for the expenditures going out. We're looking to utilize a third party program to to test run that in FY nineteen to help with Crab Apple Fest. As you can see, they currently have a healthy fund balance to be able to do some of that from. I also have the expenditures by event. So here we can see the bottom line of what it costs to put on Crab Apple Fest and carving a crabapple. I'll go slowly. Um, we have moved the literary festival. They currently are run by the authors, so the city no longer has to fund that program. They're here is for support. We have Veterans Day and then tree lighting was moved to combine with Christmas crabapples, so we didn't have to call that out separately as the tree is now in crabapple. And there you can see the cost of Christmas and crabapple. Um, we have the have our loved pancake breakfast with Anna at the fire department at Station forty three and that's what that that bacon and pancakes cost.
Let me just say that. I was gonna say the majority of that was bacon.
Yes, it was.
Never seen that much bacon.
Um, we have the mayor's run and Earth Day. Earth Day is now right here on the plaza. We have the spring events and Rock for Rescues. Um, in FY eighteen or seventeen, I believe that was still Hometown Jubilee, so we'll remove that extra coating once that year falls off the map. Memorial Day and the summer series. And then lastly, we have volunteer appreciation and other events. Other events is kind of where we keep a little bit of money to be able to approach events that come up that people bring up that sound like a great idea and we can test run them, try them out and see how they go before we create a whole separate array of line items for them. I believe the egg hunt was birthed out of that account, things like that. Next, we have the hotel motel tax fund, which is what goes to fund those events. They're transfer out. So this is just showing you that again in this department, no revenue increase anticipated and that a hundred percent of it will be going to special events fund. We currently have a three percent hotel motel tax. We have our E nine one one fund. Um, currently, one hundred percent of what we collect goes straight to City of Alpharetta to fund our portion of the E nine one one operations through them. We're looking to we're anticipating an increase here as we've seen the department of revenues started collecting the revenues directly and distributing them. So it's a little easier than us getting an array of payments from all different providers. So they're doing taking point on that and we've been getting payments more regularly. So now I want to move into our transportation special local option sales tax program. Worked with CERA leaders on developing the breakdown for this five year program. As you can see, I showed the activity of what we've had in seventeen and eighteen, where our amended budget is for nineteen, the proposal for twenty, and then the projections for twenty one and twenty two at this time. Those are subject to change depending upon actual collections and timing projects. And if anyone wants to talk about any of the specific projects, we have a breakdown of project by project and we can kind of go through them just really quickly. We have a third party management team that comes in and every year for about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year takes point on um a lot of the management processes there and keeping the funding and making sure that everything is moving along with the programs. We have the project at Winward Parkway that we have some funding in but has not been started yet. We have SR one forty in green. So as we've been collecting revenues, we've been assigning them to these projects, they may or not have been started as you can see. The Northeast Crab Apple Connector. have Hople at Bethany. Freemanville in Birmingham. Hople at Thompson. And some of the planning has begun on this project as you can see in expenditure section, we have started spending some money. Um, with the pedestrian improvements, we have those that are currently budgeted in this department. You will see two projects over in the CIP, the Big Creek Greenway and the master plan for the trails. They are both using some T-Splus funding as well from the pedestrian portion. Then we have Hople at Hamby. The bridge program is going to fund the Birmingham Middle Bridge. Capital will fund the other bridges. And then Morris Road widening, which phase one was underway and there will be a phase two, as you can see, coming online within a couple of years. So first was the roundabout, I believe, next will be the widening. And then Bethany at Providence. So those are all the identified projects that were in the plan approved by the voters. There are additional plans and if funding comes in, we will attack those. Next, we have our capital improvement plan. This spreadsheet is going to show you all of the other funding for capital, including our transfers in from operating as we talk about all the time, that's our Pago program. We have some T-Splus funding we just talked about from the pedestrian category, impact fees. Um, we also have other funding such as grants and debt service. So this is an overall view of the seven year project by those funding categories. So you can see all of our projects on the left and then where the funding for the next seven years will come from throughout the project. And on the far right, you can see if any are over or under in funding. So we'll scroll through this and kind of identify where we talked about some of those longer term projects that we currently don't have all the way funded, including some of the new master planned parks. One here we talked about was Big Creek Greenway. Um, there's a slight disclaimer here. The four million seven fifty was the original estimate based on original projections. The project plan has changed. The current funding being requested will yield a new project, sorry, a new plan to be able to determine if that four point seven five is actually the right number. So that may change. We have here the mobile traffic control center. That's an idea that public works has had and we're waiting to make sure that we have the most accurate up to date information regarding traffic signal technology to move forward on funding that project. Here we have Providence Park. Um, we have the new plan that shows six point six million dollars and we are funding that through a Pago program. So that's going to extend past the twenty twenty six timeline. Same thing with Birmingham Park and the former Milton Country Club Passive Park improvements. The other view that everyone really likes to see is that Pago program. So this is your seven year spread out. Let me see if I can get the whole thing out here, showing you each year what we are planning to put into the capital improvement plan from operating transfers, our Pago program. You'll see here the reduction that we talked about for the parcel alignment project. You'll also see the reduction we talked about for the birdhouse and the parcel or the striping, sorry. So the bottom line here, we're looking at about four to four point six million dollars annually going out to capital under our current four point seven three one program. This is the area we've talked about the possibility of decreasing if we had a different miller trader going with bonding. Now, that's a lot of projects. I don't know if you want to sit here and scroll. I don't want to have to make you scroll through them. But as you know, it's been a seven year program. The majority of the projects are have been continued for a long time now. So if you have any specific questions, I can answer any of those.
Bernadette, could you just just sort of the audience and the definition of a pay go system or pay as you go system?
Yes, so it's kind of like we we consider it like our savings account. So we talk about comparing it to your home budget to where you can either take it a loan out to buy your car or you can save up until you have money to buy your car and buy it outright and be done with it. Um, so those are your two options. You can and Pago is your saving till you can afford.
Bernadette, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
It, were we able to utilize the Pego system when we purchased the when we were offered the volume discount on the fire trucks? Is that, do I remember that correctly?
Yes, that does fall. Some cities do bond for all of their vehicles. We were able to through having savings set aside, especially because we're saving for long term projects, shift some of that to be able to afford those the ninety thousand dollar savings on the two fire trucks, and then now we will shift back those savings to the project where we took it from in this year.
Shall we save ninety thousand on that?
Um, yes, ma'am.
Because we had the money through the Pego system?
Correct. If we didn't have money set aside, we either would have had to foregone other things to try to put together that money or not have gotten the deal.
Okay, thank you. I understand. Thanks.
Sure. And I just wanted to point out one last thing, the impact fee program. We are looking to do an impact fee ordinance update. As you know, the original plan was adopted in two thousand fifteen. And the existing plan was geared towards some of our older plans at this point, our two thousand twelve Parks and Rec plan, our conservation plan for land acquisition. Also, our population increase will be determined by the new census. So all of those things will be able to go into a new methodology report to yield the right rate and the right distribution amongst departments within the city on projects that we have coming forward. So where right now you saw like the baseball fields with Jim's request can be covered by about sixty seven percent impact fees. Those percentages would change but dependent upon the new plans and it would be a hundred percent funded by impact fee admin revenue we've collected.
Any questions or comments?
Good job.
Thank you.
Staff, okay, everything.
Okay. So we will put this all together in the annual budget book and it'll be available for the public to review in much more detail, including all of the facts and variances.
And I do want to, yeah, not only to take Pat's point. Good job. Thank you. I know every department, everyone sitting here has put in a lot of, lot of work and a lot of time. It's a very deep budget and whatnot. I also want to thank staff and I know kind of the reputation amongst staff is they get questioned on everything. And if, you know, there's a nineteen dollar charge for something, why wasn't it sixty the way it was last month? So I only say that to not only thank you guys and just starts from the top down, but just so that our citizens realize, you know, while yes, the city costs a lot to run the city and the city spends a lot of money, but it's it's done as efficiently as possible so that there's value, value out of it. So there's not, there's not an attitude of wasting any dollars. Okay, so at this point, we will, is there, is there any other questions or whatever on the work session here? If not, we'll reconvene to special call meeting of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion? I have a second. All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria with a second, by Councilmember Morag, to reconvene, our special call meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Because that's unanimous. All right. Stacy, if you'll please call the our next item.
Our next item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to establish the Avalon tax rate at the city of Milton for fiscal year twenty twenty and for other purposes. First presentation was at July twenty second, two thousand nineteen special called city council meeting. First public hearing held on July twenty second at the same special called council meeting. Second public hearing was held on July twenty second at the regularly called city council meeting. And the third public hearing you heard earlier this evening on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. This is agenda item number nineteen one fifty two, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Could we repeat all presentations?
If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to respond to them. I know we talked about a lot today. I can bring the presentation back up if anyone wants to see any slides from it.
I'll open up to you, Joe.
So, last time we talked about this, I referred to the rollback millage rate as the revenue neutral millage rate. The current millage rate is the rate neutral millage rate and the cap cap millage rate as the historically neutral millage rate.
How are they?
If if we look, the difference between the rollback and the current, so so if we were to keep the millage rate the way it is, we're actually going to see an increase in revenue. And the reason we see it is because of the the rollback represents what it would take to not increase the revenue at all.
And then it's about three percent. The increase in revenues at about three percent.
Right, right. So, um,
I'm going to pull this slide up. I think it's the most popular.
And you're only talking about, Bernadette, you're only including property tax, correct?
Correct. So we're talking about a revenue
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, that's thank you.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry. Yes, I'm very sorry. We're talking specifically about real, personal and most people for current year property taxes at three percent.
Okay. So, so if we said that we were going to be revenue neutral, that's obviously going to have an impact to our plan, the things we just talked about. Do you have any kind of a idea where we would tolerate those impacts? And Stephen, maybe that's a better question for you because some of the stuff, we can't just cut everybody, you know, equally because those programs don't break up that way. So do we have we targeted certain things for certain decisions, I guess?
Preliminally, you know, obviously I would have to come back to council to see if you agreed with where my my recommendations would be. You could you could tell me, I don't want you touching the capital program you need to cut in in your operating, which I would say that'll that will affect level of service and you may agree with that. Maybe maybe we are providing too high a level of service in some areas and that comes off sounding weird, but maybe we don't need to be mowing as much as we are. There may be areas to draw back on where I would likely what I would likely say is um look more toward the capital budget and just elongate some of the programs, the the master plans that we'd be looking at instituting or look for alternative funding sources for those.
Right.
But we are going to be looking and Bernadette and I have had in depth conversations about what we're going to be looking at in twenty twenty to see about creating or enhancing current revenues. But that would be the first place that I would be recommending is extend the the implementation of some of these plans.
Okay, because when we Okay, because when we made the decision last year to reduce our capped millage rate, the idea was that we need we were trying to take a change in overall taxation for our citizens into context and see what we could do to contribute to helping them manage the drastic shift we saw last year. Okay. Now, none of our fellow, you know, municipalities or governing bodies decided to follow our lead. So so we were alone in that. And and that cost us something. I mean, we deferred certain programs and plans and and challenges that we wanted to invest in, but because we were going to reduce our revenue by a certain percentage, we knew we were just going to make that decision. So if we continue with that plan, we ' re going to get a little bit more behind this year. Again, we ' re we ' re just going to um not make the um I I don ' t want to say not move forward because that ' s that ' s not really it. We ' re falling behind in terms of what we had originally planned.
Hmm. So not to oversimplify it, but you know, I see Bernadette ' s starting to pick up the things that I ' ve been saying. It ' s not very different from your home budget. Um, just on hopefully on a larger scale. Um, the you you have a few choices. You increase revenues, you reduce your your costs, or you borrow, or you or you delay and defer. So if you are going to, you know, we ' ve been using the buy the car type analysis. Um, you you let ' s say you wanted car B, car B costs fifty thousand dollars. You have the choice to save for it. You have the choice to to borrow for it, or you could choose car C, uh which might be B minus two, and you ' re not spending the same amount of money on it. So you not to oversimplify, but that ' s those would be the 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 conversations we ' d have to have. Or get a part- time job in addition to your full- time job and increase your revenues.
And, yeah, I would agree. It ' s, you know, it ' s simplified, but it is simplified almost like a personal budget. I think we all could, you know, cut twenty percent out of everybody ' s budget. Now, that mean you ' d have to, you know, all of a sudden you wouldn ' t have a landscaper and you wouldn ' t have this and you wouldn ' t be putting new tires on the car and next thing you know, your your wife ' s riding around with bald tires, your kids, but but it could be done. So we do have to kind of balance it. Rick.
I I like uh Councilman Longoria ' s analogy, the way you explain the different millage rates. I think that basically simplifies it so you understand what we ' re looking at. If we go with the millage rate neutral approach, the four point three nine oh, which is what we reduced it to last year, um we still are seeing an increase in actual revenues from a tax taxability standpoint, in addition to the different revenue categories, income revenue categories, loss, T S B O S, the different dollars coming in. At the four point three nine percent, are we if we kept it at that, are we going to see a decrease in our service levels?
Mm, you shouldn ' t unless of course you direct me to not touch the ultimately elongate the 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 implementation of the plans and you say, I want this out of operating. No, it shouldn ' t impact daily level of service. If you want to if you want to look at how long it takes to deliver on on master plans at the level of service, then yes.
Okay. Peyton. So I guess I ' m kind of new to this. This is my second go around with the budget. The first first year, we all had this talk and we all knew that more than likely we ' re going to have to raise it back up this this year. So we had that discussion at the last work session. So over the last eleven or twelve years, has the millage rate always been the same, four point seven three one, except for last year? Correct.
That ' s correct.
Okay. I think our citizens are very satisfied with our 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 level of service, and we ' ve promised them Providence Park, Milton Country Club, you know, updating all this stuff. And those are the complaints that we have. And with a ninety five percent satisfaction, I ' m fully happy with keeping it at four point seven three one.
Matt.
I I
Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Lauren and Matt.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, my my comment is, um, for those on council that have been at this a lot longer than me, I just know that we we put a lot of credibility in our Pego system and that operating transfer through all these years. I ' m I ' m not comfortable changing that strategy that we ' ve had for all these years. We we ' re sitting in a building um right now where you all are that is the product of our Pego system and having that in our hip pocket is very important to me and I ' m not I ' m not willing to compromise that.
Okay, Matt. Um, well, I ' m gonna take an opposite position on that. Obviously, last year, um, everybody was shocked with regards to the increase in property valuations by the Fulton County Board of Education, which was really doomed to fail anyway because you had a government entity that was setting rates and then setting the valuations and using the force of law to collect on it. That ' s going to happen. So I ' m glad the state legislature actually reduced um the pain on that with the um reducing valuations, the two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen valuations this year. So we did know that taxes were going to increase last year. The interesting thing though is is that the taxes increased at a substantial rate compared to other years, even though we still lowered the millage rate. Um, you know, and so if it ' s going along at a two, you know, one and a half, two and a half percent every single year and property tax increases and all of a sudden, boom, they got an increase of over six percent. I think it was eight percent at one point. So, um, so right now what we ' re looking at is if we go back, if we keep the millage rate the same because we ' re valuing properties less. Um, and by your estimation, only fifty percent of our residents were actually taking advantage of the homestead exemptions. Um, you know, you ' ve got a lot of people that are still ceiling, still feeling the effect of the increase in taxation that ' s happened over the last year. Um, and I ' m not sitting there saying that we don ' t do a great job. Our staff has done a great job of putting this money together and Bernadette ' ve done a fantastic job in all of this. Um, and you always know what you say because you say it so fast. It ' s always fun to listen to you. Uh,
I thought I was going really slow tonight.
it ' s you know your stuff, which is good, but you ' re of course just asking for the things based on assumption of the policy that the council is going to set. So the reality of scarce resources is that whatever we get is still at the expense of our taxpayers regardless, right? Especially if it comes to property taxes because that is a rule of law, forceful action that actually takes money away from people to provide for services that we think we know better than they should get. Now, the assumption that we ' ve made on the local option sales taxes is relatively going to stay the same even though we ' ve shown increases of local option sales taxes for since two thousand twelve. Um, granted, we had the negotiations that increased that substantially, which meant that we we did have a revenue bond that allowed us to pay for some of the things we have in Bell Memorial and et cetera. Um, we got we got it at great interest rates and if we did have to go to debt, the if rates again are so low right now, that ' s not something that would cause me any concern. It would be a situation where that we should know and recognize that we might be able to get revenue from other sources other than using the force of law to take it out of our taxpayers pockets. So from that perspective, um, when we did the the green space bond initiative, that was on a vote by the residents. Eighty two percent of the people voted to tax themselves for us to buy land and according to the ballot measure, park improvements. Now, we made disagree about what that actually said or was intended, but I ' m going to go back to the the plain language principle that if it ever went to a court of law. It says specifically that a court ' s not going to want to get into the politics of what we decide here politically. They ' re going to go back to the plain language, which meant that whatever anybody saw on the ballot, parks improvements should be there. The point is I ' m making is that revenues can come from other sources to provide for the green space activity that we are doing here. So we don ' t have to raise taxpayer dollars and pull it out of people ' s pockets and order to continue to get our green our green space. We don ' t have to. Plus, then you got the active park area, which is what we have issues with too. And that ' s really interesting. Obviously, we ' ve had issues with Bell Memorial, we ' ve been trying to get that going, we had the MOU with Alpharetta. Um, but then the next thing is is we abandon that now that gives us five hundred or thousand a year in active park revenue that we can use now to help catch up on the infrastructure that we don ' t currently have. So that plus we ' ve had revenue generation discussions with corporate sponsorships in the past that have kind of died off. We don ' t have those discussions anymore. We can probably find a way to get additional revenues as well without again having to raise the millage rate. So we have a millage rate where it is, we ' ve got we have residents that are still in turbulence with regards to what to expect. Even though we lowered the millage rate last year, everybody still took a hit with that as much as it is. And as far as the city goes, we ' re still involved in that process with them. Now, granted, we want to do the services where we are, but I think we ' re a year early to try to raise the rate to continue to increase property taxes on the residents in the city of Milton. I think that we need to keep the millage rate the same where it is. Um, and hopefully from the way the economy is going, that we continue to have an increase in local option sales tax and that. Now per section that you have of it being the same is wrong, and we still get another increase as far as that goes. Now, that is a whole lot of economic discussion there. That is not your job as an economist to determine where that ' s going to go. We understand that, but that is our job as council members to have the foresight to have a determination of what we really believe about that. And then when revenue comes in, how do we decide to allocate that according to the budget that the staff has. So it ' s not a problem with the budget. I understand where you ' re going. It ' s a question of where we ' re getting revenues from. And the reality is, is that we still have revenue from our citizens who are trying to still figure out the fluctuation in tax revenues. And we as a council, using the force of law, can determine that everybody should pay more when the reality I think is, is that that money is best left in their own pockets right now until we know where this thing is going. I want to keep the millage rate the same.
May I weigh in? Absolutely. Carol. This is, thank you. It is, thank you. Um, I I appreciate that, but with no crystal ball, I find a fair amount of that economic analysis unusual. Um, I took a much simpler path and reached out to a lot of people and asked them fairly simple questions about what do you think it ought to be. Here are your options. Here ' s what happens at this level, at this level, at this level. And overwhelmingly, people want what they want, and they ' re not willing to defer capital projects, especially the pent up demand to have some of the the parks of all types, um, built out, just more general amenities, and there ' s been a steady drumbeat of that in my short time on council. Additionally, I don ' t think that we as a sitting body think we know better than the citizenry. I think that we get tremendous amount of input and we ' re put to work on behalf of the citizenry. So when I share my point of view that although there have been a few well reasoned and well written emails to the contrary about not raising this tax, which is raised a very small amount, I mean, let ' s not let ' s not lose our frame of reference here. It ' s a very small jump back to what it had been for many, many years. Individually, it ' s not a lot of money and I don ' t take anybody ' s increase lightly, but the aggregate is very helpful to build out for the greater good without having to defer. And deferral is often very problematic when there is no crystal ball. So I ' m straightforward. I think that I would go with a four point seven and feel confident that that would help us deliver on what we have seen so many people ask for in recent months. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Joe.
So Bernadette, sorry to get you back up there. Um, so we operate under some pretty strict rules. I mean, the reason we have a budget, the reason we vote on a budget and pass a budget is to guide the city in terms of where they can or can ' t spend money, right? Right. And so, um, if we were to receive revenue, unexpected revenue, whether that ' s um some fluke and we collect more property taxes than we originally estimated, which we ' ve seen in the past, even though we sometimes expect that everybody pays a property tax bill, that doesn ' t always happen, um or if S B O S T or some other local tax were to generate more revenue than we anticipate, while we have no problem accepting the additional revenue, it ' s not like we can all of a sudden just spend it. Right.
policy for that too. So our policy for that indicates that it has to be on one time nonrecurring projects. So that ' s where we utilize those abilities to receive additional revenues beyond our conservative budget, which is also required by ordinance, to put them towards our capital projects. You will see in the F Y nineteen amendment, we have a healthy amount transferring out from the ability of us to have saved or in that F Y eighteen fiscal year, we ' re rebuilding our fund balance and it ' s all going towards these projects that we talk about one time nonrecurring.
Okay, so we ' ve got some controls in place was going to be my point to ensure that any unanticipated change in our revenue on the positive side is managed in an appropriate way.
Yes, finance loves rules.
Yes, I I agree.
Okay. Ambassador Rick.
Yeah, just to be clear, I guess where I stand, when you you boil, you look at all the different things that are out there, I ' m still in favor of keeping the the millage rate at four point three nine oh.
Check. So where would you cut? And how would you tell those citizens? Just curious. Something. Well, I mean, I said it earlier, we can get it from other revenue sources. Like corporate sponsorships? Well, corporate sponsorship is one, which is an avenue we
Matt, I was kind of being facetious.
I ' m not being facetious. That ' s something we were discussing prior that actually has an opportunity. So I ' m sorry. And then go ahead.
Okay. Rick, I think you have questions.
I think it ' s I think it ' s Peyton, it ' s not necessarily just where you cut. If you if you go through all the projects, there ' s my biggest thing is is I guess along with what Matt is saying is, am I going to continue to to tax people, take the the dollars? We have choices to make. When I look at the budget, there are things that are are flexible as far as what we want to spend it on. We ' re just assuming that we we won ' t be able to. That ' s why I asked, what about level of service? Are we going to have negative impact on level of service? We ' re adding different positions, we ' re adding different things. There ' s a whole list of things that were built into it. I know, again, this is not anything negative from my view on on staff, uh, as far as the way they look at it. I ' m just saying, I think we all have to look at how we spend our money, what we want to spend on. So I ' m just making the the point that we aren ' t cutting anything if we keep it at a four point three nine. We may not be doing some of the things that staff has requested and put in for funding, but I don ' t see it as a a cut where I ' m cutting services.
Well, we ' ve all supported what they ' ve provided us. So in theory, we ' re kind of going back on what we ' ve told staff, just in my opinion.
Okay, Joe.
Well, I I would actually make it, sorry. Sorry, I was just gonna say, I would actually make it more.
Go ahead, Carol.
Carol, please.
Okay, thank you. No, I would I would actually make it more broad than that. It ' s not just what we ' ve instructed staff. I feel like it ' s very much what people have instructed us. I mean, it ' s a big list that we have to fulfill, and we can stay on course with that. I don ' t know how we explain, yeah, we heard you, but we decided that we ' re just going to defer into the economic unknown. That just makes no sense to me. When we have an opportunity with a relatively small increase, which in its aggregate will get the job done, it just, it just doesn ' t feel responsible to me. With all due respect to differences of opinions, truly, I ' m I ' m not there and I ' m sorry about that, but I ' m on location. But I don ' t see how we do that to people at this point in time with this very modest request where we have this opportunity to to take these projects home.
Okay. Joe.
Yeah, I ' d I ' d like to say also, I agree with Carol. Um, I ' m not, well, as far as I ' m concerned, service quality and that includes Providence Park and getting that park open. It ' s open, but the improvements to it and I consider deferring these capital projects. I mean, we ' re that ' s going to cost us money in the long run. So I ' m I think keeping our millage rate where we ' ve always had it and wisely using those funds as we always have done, we talked about this last year, it served our city well, and that ' s where I ' m at.
Okay. Joe.
So Bernadette, real quick, um, make sure I understood this right. Our potential revenue from property taxes and our anticipated revenue are two different numbers. You had calculated a historically, here ' s what we collect in terms of percentage. And so regardless of what the potential tax is based on the property valuations and our millage rate, there ' s actually about a half a million dollars difference between what it could be and what we expect to collect. Is that right?
will collect the remainder in like the future years. So you ' ll see that in prior year line items.
Right. Somebody sells their property or something, they got to come clean.
Well, we ' ll also um some people just pay a little bit a little bit later than others.
Okay.
Um, so you said in a prior year collection. Um, so historically it ' s been at that ninety five percent rate.
Right. So, but the Right. So, but the reason I call it the historically neutral um millage rate is because we have something written into our charter that does not allow us to change our millage rate unless the citizenry votes on that in a public election. I mean, we as a council can ' t change it. That we can ' t raise it, I should say.
Right, so if we have another two thousand, right.
And to be a little bit more specific, what it says is that the millage rate can ' t be above the seven point uh
Four point seven three one.
four point seven three one. So that ' s the limit. So we pushed it down, what we were actually doing was saying, hey, look, we ' re trying to provide some relief because of the change in property valuation. The other thing though is that while we ' ve kept it the same for the past eleven years, or eleven out of twelve years it was the same, um, we weren ' t doing what other municipalities were doing or what other taxing authorities were doing, and that is using both knobs in the equation to manage the revenue that they were going to realize because most people they they change the valuation of the property and they change the millage rate, or they can, that and that really, you know, sort of has the double whammy. But I guess my point is, it ' s not like we ' ve been going crazy with our millage rate. It ' s been the same thing since the city started. And and if I you know if you can ' t say something ' s anticipated because you ' ve had it the same way the last eleven out of twelve years or twelve out of thirteen, whatever it ' s been, I mean, I don ' t know what you could say. I mean, it ' s like the New England Patriots winning the Super Bowl or something.
Okay, so yeah, I think everybody made their point and all, I ' m gonna you know, I I have a little bit of a different perspective than anybody else here just because this is we ' ll be going fourteen years of of uh of cityhood and budgets and originally, and the reason the cap was there was our legislators wanted to make sure that forming the city would not increase taxes, uh or at least the percentage of taxes that our citizens are taxed. And I ' m I ' m very proud of our council and our staff at at that time because as we started city, we were saddled with the same amount of money that Fulton County was spending taking care of what is now Milton, and proud to say that uh everybody worked together and our citizens really got more bang for their buck within the the first year. There was a lot of improvements. And I remember as the city was incorporated, the majority of our citizens had the attitude of just leave us alone. That ' s the reason, you know, the reason they wanted to form the city or most, uh, the majority supported it was, um, you know, we wanted local control, but just the county, the the government leave us alone. But as we ' ve we ' ve improved our services and new people have moved here, now of a sudden people expect a whole lot more as you increase, as we ' ve built parks, as we ' ve increased our infrastructure and our roadways and and roundabouts and uh facilities and again, parks and rec programs and activities. Um, people are enjoying those improvements but also expecting more. And and you know, public safety is a a great thing, the safety of the city. So again, um, it ' s a different perspective. And as we have have grown, I ' ll use this for example, I of the maybe five citizens that I ' ve heard from that are uh against bringing the the millage rate back to where it was, probably get a hundred comments, hundred to one of people that want more park space, more ball fields, more improvements, um, want us to to get the country club open, the trail system and whatnot. So again, I think, you know, as a citizen, I ' d be all for lowering the millage rate myself. I I get hit as hard or more than anybody else here as any of our citizens with the the tax rates and pay our our city taxes. Um, but as a as sitting on this side of the table and I look at the the needs and desires of our citizens, it again would say a hundred to one, um, the uh, um, what I what I see and and hear from our citizens is is they uh they want the improvements and uh and the quality of life and again, which in turn, um, you know, keeps the property values up. So, anyways, with that, I ' m gonna open up for a motion.
Mayor, I ' ll make a motion to um to approve consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to establish the average tax rate of four point seven three one of the city of Milton for fiscal year twenty twenty and for other purposes. Okay.
Second.
All right, fighting over that one. Um, I have a motion for from Councilmember Jamison to set our millage rate at four point seven three one, uh, with a second from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion?
Could we include the bond military in the vote? Do we need to include the bond military in that vote?
And right, I would prefer that it be in the vote.
Okay, so um we have a motion and a second. So I ' ll ask the second.
I withdraw my second.
Withdraw the second.
I withdraw my motion. Go ahead.
Okay.
bond millage rate.
point five eight eight.
Okay, I ' ll open up for the motion again.
Mayor, I ' ll make a motion, uh, to approve the consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to establish the average tax rate of the city of Milton for a four point seven three one and the green space bond millage rate of five point eight eight for fiscal year twenty twenty and for other purposes.
Sorry, it ' s point five eight eight.
Hold on. Hold one sec. I say point five eight?
You said five point.
Point eight eight.
Does it count I have dyslexia? Did you second it? Okay. So so yeah, so let me just admit my motion and I ' ll just say it all over again. I ' ll just withdraw my motion and say it all over again. Consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to establish the average tax rate of four point seven three one of the city of Milton and the green space bond of point five eight eight for fiscal year twenty twenty and for other purposes. Is that right? Okay.
Is that right? Okay, I ' ll second that. All right.
I ' m done with these motions. I ' m done. I ' ve been quiet.
I have a I have have a motion as read by Councilmember Jamison and a second by uh Councilmember Longoria. And now I ' ll open up for any discussion. Matt.
Yeah, discussion. Um, for those of members of council who are new here, they may not realize there actually is distinction among different taxes. And so some of the reasons why we were able to do a lot of the things that we have done in the past is because we got a lot of our revenues not just from property taxes, but because of the local option sales tax increase, because of the geo bond that we did and plus the green space bond. Not only that, but we ' ve got T SPOs that ' s involved, we got impact fees that we ' ve done as well. So we ' ve got revenue sources from several different sources. The difference with those though, is that they are either voluntary taxes by our residents themselves, or they are taxes on those who are trying to do business in Milton, like developers and impact fees. Right here, what we ' re doing here, is we ' re actually deciding ourselves to tax our residents more when I don ' t think we need to. And that ' s a very important distinction. So if we are going to do that, I ' ve seen people on fixed incomes that are terrified about taxes. I
Council, council member, council member.
I I please, I ' m I '
Hold on. One second. And
please. I have seen P., I have looked in the eyes of senior citizens who are on fixed incomes who are afraid of rising taxes in our own community. And I ' ve seen that, and because of that, that affected me deeply and know that we have an obligation to try to keep our property taxes low from that perspective. There are other revenue sources that can achieve the level of service that everybody wants to maintain, and we ' re doing that. So that debate is out there and it still exists. I appreciate the motion. Now we can go ahead and vote or continue discussion.
Okay. Nope. Councilor ' s good.
I have a comment.
Hold on one second. I think you very clear in your position. Um, was that Carol on the line or Laura that wanted to make
No, no, that ' s okay. No. Please feel sorry for me. I have a comment. Yeah, no, I I ' ll just go back to this council, prior council, four of you are still on council, kept this rate at four point seven for every year that we ' ve been a city except for one, and that was last year. So I don ' t understand what ' s changed. I understand the tax structure. So, um, I fully support returning to the millage rate that our citizens expect and the services that we have committed to provide.
Okay. Anybody else?
Hey, can I make can I make comments please?
Yes, go ahead, Carol.
So, and and that with all due respect, since your comments were um also very directly aimed at me because I am new, but I actually don ' t need to be schooled on taxation. But I might add that some of this is political. I mean, we all who are most likely going to be on council have to interact with people in the future who have expectations and who have implored us to get these things done. And you ' ve made a decision not to be on council. And that is that is the difference. It ' s easier to bring taxes down when you ' re walking out the door. So I am very confident that this is the right move. Well, it ' s a wild moment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you take a vote, just one point of order before you get ready to vote.
Say that again, Ken.
I ' d like to address a point of order with you before you
Oh, okay. All right. Now just I ' ll close out the discussion and, you know, respect everybody ' s position and and points on this. So thank you all for that. Ken, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor of the Council, just because of the the significance of this vote setting the millage is a big deal. I ' d just like confirmation from Councilmember Bentley and Councilmember Cokerly that they are outside of the jurisdiction this evening.
Okay, Councilmember Bentley and Cokerly, did you hear Ken ' s comment or question?
We did. I did, yes. Never going outside.
So so the question is to confirm the question is confirm that you are outside of the jurisdiction outside the city limits of
outside of jurisdictional limits of the city of Milton.
Ken, you have.
Yeah, absolutely. I am like north north.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. We ' ve got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, aye.
Okay. So did you get that Stacey I think with Councilmember Morrigan and Coons in in opposition. So that passes five five to two. Okay. Um, that ' ll conclude this meeting. I have a motion to adjourn. So moved. Have second. I have motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That ' s unanimous. Thank you.